Hi, how are you? I am Senator Liz Krueger, one of the three co-chairs of today's hearing. Actually, Andrew Guarnardis, the fourth committee chair, had a conflict, so he isn't able to join us. I'm just going to quickly introduce my Democratic colleagues and then turn it over to my ranker on finance to introduce the Republican side. I see we're being joined by Senator Leroy Comrie as he comes in, joined by Kevin Thomas, and I'm told this will be his last hearing as a state senator, much to our sadness and chagrin. Senator James Scoofus and Senator Tim Ryan. Oh, my God, Tim Ryan. What did I do?
Oh, it's a hybrid.
Sean Ryan. You're right, I made a hybrid. How weird.
It's a Buffalo thing.
It is a Buffalo thing. Senator Sean Ryan. And I'd like to turn it over to the ranker on finance, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and your colleagues.
Yes, thank you, Chairwoman Krueger. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Senator Tom Omara. I'm the ranking member on Finance and on the Investigations and Governmental Operations Committees. We have with us Senator Dean Murray, who's our ranking member on Economic Development Committee, and we have Senator Peter Oberacher with us.
Thank you very much. And I know several people have opening remarks. I'm just going to highlight a few things about how we handle hearings. The speakers will be allowed 10 minutes per speaker?
Per panel.
Per panel, excuse me. And then we will have chairs being given five minutes to ask questions, non-chairs three minutes, but we believe we will have time for second rounds for people. I'm very glad to see so many here with us today on a day we're not usually in Albany. Been very excited about this hearing, and frankly, it's more timely than ever in the context of the November elections because the Senate actually commissioned an independent study of our tax expenditure incentive programs that came out just before the end of session. Senator Scoofus will know more details. Where we were asking the questions, we are giving away a lot of money through tax incentives and expenditures. And sometimes people say, well, that's not really money you're giving away because you wouldn't get it if you weren't having the activity. But actually, when you have tax expenditures and incentives, somebody else has to pay the money into the state budget to pay for things. And so there really is a real cost in real budget terms and real-life terms for making the decisions we make vis-à-vis tax incentives and expenditures throughout the state budget and various agencies. And so we felt it was very important that we have an opportunity to both review the report, make sure the public knows about the report, and an opportunity for people to come and testify about tax incentives, expenditures, what they interpret this report to mean. And certainly, right now, for New York State, walking into a new federal administration in January where we're not exactly sure everything that could be happening, but we're pretty sure it's going to involve a lot less money coming to the state of New York. Hence, a real need for the state of New York to think very hard about how we have been making our decision and our priorities with the money that we raise from our own constituents. So I do think this is more important even than we talked about putting together this hearing, and very timely. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Senator Scoofus.
Thanks very much, Senator Krueger, and happy birthday today as well. We are thrilled and also sad for you that you're spending it with us here at a public hearing. But it's great to see you and my colleagues as well, and looking forward to the testimony and hearing over the next several hours. And to further set the stage, Senator Krueger did a really worthwhile job teeing things up here. In the 2022-2023 fiscal year budget, we included an appropriation for an outside independent, what we hoped at the time and what I believe materialized, objective analysis of 25 different economic development programming: tax credits, deductions, and other incentives, subsidies that are offered through a variety of different agencies, including Empire State Development. And, you know, I, and I think I speak for a lot of my colleagues here, believe that this should not be a one-time exercise in good government, even though this was the first time that something like this had taken place. We did receive the report at the start of this year. It should not be a one-time exercise, and more so, it shouldn't be a document that is disregarded simply because the contents of the document are inconvenient to some stakeholders here. New Yorkers are struggling to make ends meet, as we all know, and it's clear to me and likely my colleagues that New York's efforts to incentivize economic growth are falling short in some cases. As New Yorkers reckon with longstanding fiscal instability, generally end at bloated agencies like the MTA, for example, in particular, who, best case, is facing a budget shortfall of over $176 million, or worst case, $1.5 billion, according to the comptroller, I'd posit that the solution is not to further squeeze our residents with new taxes or fees. Part of the solution, I believe, is most certainly not to continue throwing money at incentive programs and subsidies that the data demonstrates are not generating meaningful returns. The findings of this analysis are illuminating, I believe. A number of these subsidies generated returns of literally pennies on the dollar. In one case, the Empire State Musical and Theatrical Production Credit, for example, generated just two cents of taxpayer returns on the dollar for each dollar invested. Another program aimed at incentivizing the redevelopment of abandoned prison settings has gone literally completely unused, not one single time has it been used since its inception. So clearly, it is not working, especially as we've had an increased number of prison closures in recent years. The analysis is not, however, a, and this is important, wholesale indictment of all things economic development, far from it. And so over the course of the next few hours, my colleagues and I look forward to a spirited discussion with industry leaders, agency heads, good government groups about where the state's economic development priorities lie. Ahead of our 2025 legislative session and budget season, this is the moment for hard conversations about New York's true financial picture. Now is the time to reevaluate these incentives, weed out the corporate giveaways that serve only the beneficiaries who use taxpayer money to line their balance sheets, and as my colleague underscored, I will reiterate, the real cost here is when we incentivize projects, we incentivize goings-on that would have happened anyway without the incentive. That's the biggest loss when that occurs. And so we need to evaluate and reevaluate all of these things, and certainly continue to wisely invest in those programs that demonstrate a proper return on investment. I will turn it over to our third co-chair here, Senator Ryan. I'll just note one last thing, however, before doing so, that as, just so all the panelists are aware, we will be swearing in the folks providing testimony today. Thank you, and Senator Ryan.
We also have new microphones just for everyone sitting up here or out there, so it's supposedly much more evident that when you are speaking, it says you are speaking, and then a big green button.
And just one more thing quickly on that, so no one's caught off guard. When your 10 minutes drops down to zero, there's actually going to be a beeping sound, and so you'll want to avoid that.
Well, good morning, everybody. Thanks for coming to have a conversation about this important subject. Economic development is probably more of an art form than it is a science. So, you know, we want New York State in the game, especially on some of these larger projects. Like, we're not doing, Syracuse and Clay New York aren't doing Micron, you know, all alone, and we're hopeful about that project, but it does make me reminisce, unfortunately, to the Tesla project in Buffalo, where the state committed, you know, a billion dollars worth of resources to the city with one of the highest childhood poverty rates in America, a city where kids are poisoned by lead every day, neighborhoods are in free fall and decay. But we decided to give money to Elon Musk to build a factory that really hasn't fulfilled anyone's promise. They're a low-wage employer, they've struggled consistently to hit their job numbers, and it hasn't created the ripple effect. But this goes back to the art form, right? You don't want to take that experience and say, well, we're out of the business now. You know, we want to be engaged, but I think in order to be engaged, we have to be consistently open to analysis. And, you know, this report, you know, showed us, while the report, it's deep, and there's a lot of pages here, it's not that deep in terms of some of the analysis. But it behooves us all to become open to analysis and not just, you know, hew and cling to old programs because there may be a few beneficiaries in New York State. But we need to make sure that we really stay modern in our practices. And then also, we just need to make sure that we look at, you know, the whole system. So, you know, ESD isn't really connected to the IDAs. Well, the IDAs give away almost as much money per year as ESD does, but at least ESD has the benefit of having one consistent policy. You know, there are over 100 IDAs who have 100 different policies, so it's a challenge to, you know, to bring it all together. But what I would like to see consistently out of ESD is the analysis of, you know, we're not asking for this program to be renewed because we don't think it works, we would like a change in, do something new, but also, you know, a goal of having a measurement matrix for all of our programs, you know, many years out. That would be how we can judge how these programs work and don't work, but also, just to be clear on, you know, how we define economic development. So, a program that says they're going to make a lot of jobs should be graded differently than something like the historic tax credit, which really is designed primarily to restore buildings and areas with the hope of other economic successes, but that's not the primary reason. So, we have a lot of programs. It's not like we lack in spending on economic development, but our results, you know, we want them to be better because we want to be an A-plus state when it comes to our economic development programs. But, you know, if, I would impart what I know several people are looking for, is that we just want to stay cutting-edge with our programs and not just cling to old programs because. So hopefully, we can continue in analysis, always striving to get better.
Tom, do you have anything to open?
Sure, just briefly. You know, I too welcome the evaluation of these programs. You know, I think the report is overly critical of these. You know, we're in a state, and what we should be talking about here primarily is the cost of doing business in New York State. I'd rather we didn't have any of these economic incentives, or have a need for any of these economic incentives. But New York State is a high-cost state of doing business, and we're in competition with every other state in the country and every country around the world, and we have much lower-cost states in this country that are offering incentives greater than ours to get companies to go to their state. These incentives are critically important to bringing businesses here, and yes, we should evaluate which ones are working and which ones aren't. But to approach it from a perspective that we don't need economic incentives is just burying your head in the sand in this state. It's just way too expensive from every angle of doing business in this state, and we need to make this state more cost-effective. There's a lot of talk in recent years about affordability in New York State, but no action towards making New York State more affordable. We're shifting around money to make it so lower-income people can afford to live here, but that's not making things more affordable for everybody. We need to look at the overall affordability and bring cost of living down, cost of doing business down in New York. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, so, first up, Hope Knight from the New York State Development Corporation and CEO, I guess that's what it is, CEO Department of Economic Development. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairpersons Krueger, Ryan, and Scoofus, and distinguished members of the New York State Senate. My name is Hope Knight, and I serve as President and CEO of Empire State Development and as Commissioner of the New York State Department of Economic Development. I'm pleased to join you today for the opportunity to discuss the tax incentive programs that are directly administered by ESD. And while there are a number of other tax credit programs administered by other agencies, I look forward to engaging you on ESD's portfolio of programs. Under the leadership of Governor Hochul and with the support of our partners in the legislature, New York State is seeing unprecedented levels of investment and job creation in next-generation industries. Much of this economic activity is made possible through ESD's portfolio of targeted incentive programs, which I'm pleased to talk to you about today. Each of the tax incentive programs ESD administers are designed to leverage private sector investment, create job opportunities for New Yorkers, and to keep New York competitive, all while incorporating a pay-for-performance model, meaning that no incentives go out of the door unless a business meets their commitments. For example, ESD's Excelsior Jobs Program is delivering real results for New Yorkers. Excelsior provides performance-based tax credits for job creation, investment, and research and development in key sectors. Since its inception, this program has led to the creation and retention of over 500,000 jobs. This program has allocated $2.3 billion in tax credits to date and leveraged more than $35 billion in private sector investment. In cooperation with our legislative partners, the Excelsior program has recently expanded to create a new tier for green economy projects. So far, ESD has awarded 20 green Excelsior projects in fields like offshore wind development and battery storage, leading to the creation of 3,400 green-collar jobs. These projects have leveraged $2 billion in private investment after allocating $105 million in tax credits. Building on the success of the Green Excelsior Tier, ESD worked with the legislature to create the Green Chips Program. As a direct result of this program, Micron chose New York State for its $100 billion semiconductor manufacturing project. This is the largest manufacturing investment in U.S. history, and it will transform upstate New York. ESD's tax credit programs also continue to generate strong results in the film industry. By encouraging production and post-production work in New York, the state capitalizes on the film sector's strong multiplier benefits that support our small businesses from bodegas and neighborhood restaurants to Main Street retailers and local hardware stores. Each public sector, each public dollar in the film tax credits issued by New York State generates approximately $24 in economic output, according to ESD's recent independent review. Film is a highly mobile industry, and competition for this investment from other states and other countries is steadily increasing. As the landscape continues to evolve, New York must be ready to change with it. And recognizing the value of remaining a leader in the sector, Governor Hochul recently worked with the legislature to modernize and extend this program, allowing New York to stay on the cutting edge and continue to be internationally competitive. The recent expansions to the program include an increase to the Diversity Job Training Fund, designed to increase diversity in production and post-production work across the state. To date, ESD has funded 10 programs which train over 300 individuals from underrepresented backgrounds for film and television careers. Throughout our work, ESD remains dedicated to transparency. The results of our tax credit programs are reported regularly through our database of economic incentives, which has 60 fields per project, more than any other state economic development database in the nation. To further understand how our projects, programs affect New Yorkers, this year, ESD procured an independent firm to conduct regular programmatic evaluations of our key initiatives. In the first year of this effort, three programs will be assessed for fiscal and economic impacts, as well as return on investment to the state. ESD's portfolio of programs offer a wide variety of tools to build a vibrant and inclusive economy, and we are proud of the work that we have done thus far. I look forward to hearing your ideas and perspectives and stand ready to work together as we continue to evaluate these programs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to call on Chair Scoofus first, but other people who have questions either text me. I think you all have my text number, and if not, just signal to me.
Thank you. And before I jump in and before the clock starts, and before we start Q and A, if I could just swear in the rest of your testimony, if you could raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. So, I sincerely appreciate the summary of ESD's work, and I think in a lot of respects, and we've talked about this, you've changed the culture at ESD in a positive way, and I appreciate that. This hearing, however, is specifically about the audit that was released earlier this year, and I didn't hear any commentary in your testimony about that report. So perhaps if you could spend a minute, 90 seconds or so, perhaps summarizing how you feel the report came out, and I'm specifically interested to hear what ESD has done with this report. How is it received, and how is it internalized?
Thank you for that question, Senator. You know, this report was something that we looked at in depth. We thought it provided useful information, and, you know, we look forward to working with the legislature as we come up on this upcoming session to look at ways to modify, update, change incentives that are proposed in this report. ESD is very focused on reviewing its programs, and we have lots of information that we collect on a quarterly, biannual basis, and this--
And a lot of that information doesn't reconcile with the findings in this report. And so how do you account for that? And specifically, do you object to any of the methodology in the report?
Do take some objection to some of the methodology in the report.
What specifically? An example or two?
An example in the film and television analysis. So, it speaks to a calculation around return on investment. And we have two independent reports that we have commissioned by two different organizations that provide different results. I would argue that the way the methodology was constructed, the calculations for the induced and direct tax revenue is at odds with the reports and the methodology that we have conducted.
And you believe your methodology is more accurate?
Yes.
How, what do you feel is a reasonable amount of money that the state should underwrite to create a single job in a year?
I think that depends. It depends on what the incentive is trying to achieve from an economic activity perspective. If we're trying to root an industry here in New York because it is nascent and growing, that, you know, sort of, jobs for dollar is going to be higher than, you know, a job that we already have captured here in this economy.
Do you feel $75,000 to create a temporary, around one-year-long, in duration job is an appropriate use of tax dollars?
I think you have to look more inclusively at that metric because if you're talking about the film industry, so much of the film industry is connected to the small business community where these productions exist. And so there is significant induced activity as a result of these productions engaging the local economy. You know, 90% of the businesses that these productions work with are small businesses, and really does impact these communities where these productions are happening.
And the report does take into account the, not just direct tax revenue, but the total tax revenue that I believe you're referring to, you know, the spillover economic impact. The, I referenced this in my remarks before, the Empire State Musical and Theatrical Production Credit comes in, per this report, at two cents on the dollar, return on investment, direct, and six cents on the dollar, total tax revenue. Even if one were to argue that the methodology in this report maybe isn't quite as precise as some of, you know, in your opinion, some of the other analyses you've seen, even if this is 50% off, or 100% off, or 200% off, maybe two cents is eight cents, which, you know, would be, as a percentage, you know, a bit of a miss. Eight cents is still an awful return on investment for taxpayers. I wonder, when you see an evaluation like that, what do you have to say to a program like that?
Absolutely. So, the Empire State Theatrical Program was created to really support upstate theaters and entertainment, was created to have--
You finish your answer.
Okay.
You don't get any more questions.
Okay, yeah. Created to have Broadway productions either do premiere productions or post-Broadway residencies in upstate theaters. We have spent $19 million in tax credits on that program, so small program, but big impact on these upstate communities because without that activity, without the tax credit, that activity wouldn't happen. You know, we have competition from other states, Connecticut, Rhode Island, Massachusetts is looking at a program. Those touring productions would go other places, and we would not get that $117 million to spend that happened as a result of those productions being in those upstate communities.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Senator Ryan?
Thank you. So, in your opening testimony, you mentioned the Excelsior, I think--
Yes.
--that created jobs, but then the other part was retain jobs. And, you know, I found in my experience as a lawyer and as a senator that the retention is a really sticky issue because it's really easy to measure new jobs. The retention almost becomes to like proving a negative, like, well, if you don't give me this, I'm not going to retain these jobs. So how do you wrestle with the retention issue to make sure that it's not abused and that companies in the know with their accountants and their lawyers just don't treat this as a right tax credit?
Thank you for that question, Senator. You know, with respect to retention and incentive companies for retention in New York State, that is a rare occurrence. You know, we have three companies that we provided retention awards to out of a very narrow program in Excelsior related to natural disasters. Aside from that, we have not, in the last three years, you know, paid to retain companies. It really has been about business attraction.
And, you know, that's a good practice, right? Because once you get into the retention business, it's just, it's so hard to figure out what's real and what's not. And a lot of times with the locally administered programs, you know, everyone comes in and checks the retention box, and there we go, but you don't really know if anything was truly retained. And earlier, I spoke of sort of, you know, sort of weeding through the old programs, and, you know, we have a tax credit program on the books for a higher veteran, which is a great idea, but I'm looking at it, and it looks like for an 11-year period, very few people came into the program, and the same for hiring a disabled person. It looks like about 12 people came into that program. Why are we keeping programs, or why aren't we retooling if we still want to have that as a goal?
I am aware of that program, but I do not administer that program. The DOL administers that program, so I would have to refer you to my colleague at the DOL.
Okay. Why does it come through? Does it come through ESD?
No, not at all.
So that's just a Department of Labor program?
Yeah, so there are a couple of programs in this report that ESD does not administer. And I will point those out.
So do you have an estimate of, what do we spend per year on economic incentives?
I will get back to you on that to give you kind of a precise number of what we spend on economic incentives per year, our last, you know, fiscal year.
Okay. You have a ballpark? You can get back to me.
Yeah, I'll get back to you.
And then, looking through this report yourself, you know, are there any programs that you said, oh, I agree with the report, this isn't effective, let's make some changes?
Well, you know, I've looked at the report, and there are programs that want to definitely take a look at, programs that may not-- take a look at, programs that may not have been, you know, fully utilized. And I think it's important that we look at this in this upcoming legislative session to figure out if these are programs we need to make changes to.
Anything particular you're looking at?
Well, the Economic Transformation and Facility Redevelopment Program, it's focused around facilities like correctional psychiatric facilities providing support to businesses that locate in the economic transformation area. You know, we know that those facilities, when they close, they're difficult for communities, and it's hard to attract business sometimes to those locations. Since this credit has been put in place, you know, we—the governor created the Prison Redevelopment Commission, and we have put forth some recommendations in moving some projects in communities where facilities have closed, and that's been proven to be successful.
So I'm kind of keen on programs where federal money's coming in, and then New York State provides a match on that. Texas is really big on that. It's helped their university system grow. We don't have as a robust program on matching for federal grants.
So, you know, since this governor's been in office, we've actually grown that portfolio of programs. We have the Small Business Research Investment Grant Program and a number of other R and D programs where we will match a federal grant.
That seems like if you're going to, you know, making investments to use current investments and to amplify those with state resources, you know, because they've already been screened, and, you know, we put forth this year the New York First Program—
Right.
—to match dollars coming into medical schools through research and development. So I would encourage Empire State Development to continue looking at things like that as we're evaluating the efficiency of our economic development portfolio. Thank you, Hope.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. I'm just double-checking. Kevin? Yes. Sorry. Firstly, Roy Comrie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning to everyone. Good to see you. You mentioned the difference in ROI between the studies. Can you break that down about why the ROI looks different in your studies than what Senator Scoofus is saying?
Absolutely. So the calculation for ROI is effectively the amount of state tax credit versus the taxes that are created in terms of revenue to the state. And that is comprised of three categories: direct, so direct taxes; indirect taxes, which are taxes related to business-to-business activity; and induced activity. So, you know, when the employee of a project goes to the grocery store, or, you know, rents in their community, or, you know, buys something, that's induced activity. And I think that different organizations could estimate those numbers in different ways, and so that's why we get different numbers.
So you're talking about residual dollars that are spent in other places that still contribute to the state's economy, such as restaurants and bodegas and special events that happen because of the activity.
And how—the breadth of how that gets measured, yes.
Right. And that's not measured directly in either study?
It is. It's measured in all, but I think I take issue with how it's measured.
Okay. Great. I only have a minute and a half, so my main point, I would align myself with the speakers that this is good that we look at these programs, and there are things that need to be done to improve them and review them. I don't think we need to eliminate all of them. I think that—I personally don't want to see a New York show that's made in Philadelphia or Canada or anywhere else. I think the positivity of having that activity within our state generates not just residual income, but positivity and pride in our state. It helps the restaurant industry in New York to know that there are artists and producers and people that are moving in and around the city. It creates more tourism, because people think that, you know, major actors are living and eating in New York. I do have some problems with the industry with their MWPE numbers and minority hiring. I do agree with Senator Scoofus that it's essential that we look at all of these programs to make sure. Just the other thing I want to note, then, before my time runs out, is that a lot of reports said that the programs weren't well-done or notified people. The Veterans Program, my veterans group don't know about it. You know, yet there are other programs here, especially the summer jobs or the youth program, that's not well-known either. And I think we need to do a better job as an administration and as a members to get this information out to the general public, because a lot of the general public don't know about these programs that exist. I'm out of time, and I'll be respectful—
You are.
—because today's your birthday.
Don't make me the bad guy here. Hope, can you answer that quickly, or do you need to get back to the senator?
Well, I—those are programs administered by DOL, so I'll make sure that—I contact my colleague on that.
Thank you. Okay. Senator Kevin Thomas.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the Commissioner for being here. You know, when I heard about this report coming out, I was looking forward to the chair's, you know, actually doing a hearing such as this. So, two questions. One, you testified that ESD administers a number of tax incentive programs, like the film tax credit, et cetera. How does ESD oversee these programs to actually understand its value to the community?
So, you know, we have a group of folks who manage this program, and we work directly with productions when they are in locations across the state, and we help them with locational assistance. We help them with vendor directories. So we actually put together a diverse online vendor directory so that these productions are able to identify diverse vendors. And we get regular reports to understand how—
These reports, can you describe what are in the reports? Like, you know, the—are they talking about the actual impact the tax incentive program is having on the community and the rate of return? Is that what's in the report?
Yes. We have a legislated mandated requirement to report every two years—
Okay.
—on the film tax credit.
So in between, you know, the reports being produced, if you see that the ROI is not coming in as predicted, what does ESD do?
Well, you know, the reports that we have commissioned have created, you know, ROI of $1.4 to $1.9 in one report, and $1.70 in the other. So the ROI has been increasing based on the reports that we receive, and we continue to look at the changing landscape of the film industry and, you know, make recommendations to the extent that we think we need to adjust the program.
So in between the report coming out, if you do see that corrective measures need to be taken, you know, because you've got boots on the ground, does ESD then go to whoever it is that the money went to to step up their game? Like, what is the process?
So we work with productions, you know, as they are, you know, filming on the ground to support them. But with respect to making adjustments to the program, the film tax credit program, that is when we work with our legislative partners to tweak or, you know, make modifications to the program as it's administered.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to move to my Republican colleagues, and I believe the order is Senator Murray first.
Thank you, Chairwoman, and thank you, Commissioner, for being here. In the report, obviously, it digs deep. I want to take a broader view of this. Many times when we talk about incentives and things like this, it can be used as kind of political fodder. You have one side claiming it's giveaways to the rich and the wealthy, and, you know, we're giving away our tax dollars. The other side says, no, these are absolutely necessary for economic growth. So—but we have different programs, and it does get confusing. You have tax incentives, you have grants and subsidies. First, let's start with the tax incentives as opposed to grants or subsidies. Tell us the difference.
So we have a variety of narrowly, you know, tailored tax incentives focused on trying to induce the economic activity that we're trying to achieve. New York is a large, you know, complex economy, and we need to be competitive. And so these tax incentives, most of them are pay-for-performance—
Right.
—meaning that, you know, no dollar goes out until the job or the investment is made. And we use these to, you know, attract new businesses, have businesses that are here expand, and, you know, that is our preferred use of providing incentive to induce activity. You know, sometimes there are grants that are needed to do things like help in a recovery effort. We had a number of grant programs focused on COVID recovery, and those were really to get businesses back on their feet.
So, Commissioner, I thought I was getting five minutes. I apologize. My time's short. So let me get to this. In my district, Station Yards got a $55 million grant. Not a tax subsidy, but a grant. How do you track the performance? The tax incentives, we can see, it's based on performance. How do you track the successes of the grants or the subsidies? And how do we, you know, justify those?
And I'm sorry, Hope, just for the clock. Senator Murray is a ranker, so it should have said five minutes, so add two minutes.
Thank you. Okay.
So Station Yards and Roy Comrie, that was a grant that was put in the 2016 budget to support the parking garage and the kind of mixed-use retail for that project. We know the kind of activity that this mixed-use retail and parking garage is going to have to this large residential mixed-use project, and we have benchmarks in the grant that are going to have to be provided for once the grant is dispersed.
And let me be clear. I think that went a long way, and that program was—I mean, the Station Yards is an incredible transformation in my district. But I worry about—excuse me—again, the tracking and the success, the how do we say that was successful? That was $55 million of taxpayer money. How do we deem that a success? By just the fact that the program moved forward? How do we justify it to the taxpayers?
So I think, you know, there were very specific benchmarks related to that grant, the milestones related to the project. The project is multi-phase, and so those are the kinds of things that we track with respect to, you know, investments in a large project like that.
Okay. My point, I guess I'm getting at, is it is difficult. You know, with it being a little confusing between the different types of incentives, it is difficult sometimes to justify it. So even in a report like this, you can—you can only look so far in something like this to deem it a success. So I think it is important that we do reports like this, but I would—I guess caution against using it as the end-all, be-all, because sometimes it isn't as easy to gauge the return on investment on things like this. And we have another project in my district, Beachwood, which is moving forward, that I believe got some as well. So, again, speaking to that, it's not just job creation. With the tax incentives, it usually is. It's not just that. I guess I'm repeating myself, but again, I'm trying to wrap my head around how you gauge the success of these grants or subsidies.
Well, you know, so it is, you know, sort of the spin-off multiplier effects that will come back into—on the tax rolls because of the activity that these projects—
And you follow up with these afterwards?
Well, we definitely follow up to make sure that those projects have been completed as they were supposed to be intended.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. My time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, ready? Senator Omera. Oh, excuse me. Oberrocker. Excuse me. Senator Oberrocker, three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The other Senator O. Commissioner, thank you for taking your time today. I have just two short questions and then maybe one observation. So in your testimony, you talked about some green energy initiatives, and one that I saw that was not in there. We did the offshore wind and battery storage. Is there any movement, or do you know of any projects with green hydrogen that is potentially coming that way? If not, I would maybe encourage a look into that because I really—
We're working with the company. Yes, yes.
Perfect. Great. Thank you. Thank you for that. Also, in your testimony, you talked about the Program for Prison Redevelopment. I have a, of course, a facility in Sullivan County that is going through the process of closing. Do you know of any—that that is on the list to be kind of looked at for redevelopment?
Well, you know, once these facilities close, we at ESD, you know, go in, work with docs, talk to the community, try to figure out high-potential ideas that can create, you know, an economic development project.
Okay. So I'll take it on my side of the equation to look into that, to make sure that they're potentially in the running for that. Lastly, I guess it's an observation, you know, as a former CEO of a company, we would have in our—in our program preventive maintenance. And it's always—it was always a difficult topic to kind of put positive impact to preventive maintenance. It looks as though it's only money going out, nothing coming in. Would you potentially agree that maybe this is sort of under a preventive maintenance umbrella where the best data that we could get is going to help us, of course, in our legislative process, right, to see the value of this? And from what I'm hearing, there seems to be, I think, an area that we could improve, which would be that information coming forth, to be able to actually physically say, yes, this is returning an investment of X and Y. Would you maybe agree with that?
I think it's definitely necessary to look at different methodologies to figure out what the best—
Well, I would encourage any—you could reach out to a former CEO such as myself. I'd be more than happy to help if there's things in that area.
Thank you.
So with that, I will actually give back my 25 seconds, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator—the other Tom, Senator Tom Omera.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Good afternoon, Commissioner. Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
We're getting the afternoon. Just generally speaking, you know, my opening remarks on just the cost of doing business in New York. You're our lead in New York State for the executive, at least, on economic development, and I certainly understand the challenges of that. I did a fair amount of industrial development agency work before my time in the legislature. So, you know, I know the struggles with making those decisions on, you know, that really that but-for analysis, is this project going to happen without this incentive? Or is it? And it's kind of a guess. But, you know, we're seeing this competition from states across the country and around the world, as I said. What are our biggest impediments? And I want to just focus on manufacturing, because I think that's where—in my mind, that's where our efforts should be, because I think a lot of other businesses and industries will grow off of a strong manufacturing base. And we certainly don't have the manufacturing base in New York that we once had. I think that goes for across the country, but we're trying to make inroads in improving that. So where are we falling short in New York on attracting manufacturing or even retaining the ones we have? Because, you know, we wake up almost every day, at least every week, with another manufacturer that's picking up and moving to another state.
No, thank you for that question. I think, you know, New York has been very successful in the last couple of years in attracting advanced manufacturing. We've been number one in terms of reshoring advanced manufacturing jobs. I think, you know, some of the challenges, and we're working to address them, are around workforce. You know, advanced manufacturing activity requires advanced manufacturing skills, and so we've been investing in our Office of Workforce, Strategic Workforce Development, to put together programs to train individuals around advanced manufacturing techniques. And I think we just have to continue to scale up, because when we talk to companies that want to locate in New York, the first thing they ask about is workforce, trained workforce. How can they access trained workforce?
What do you see in comparing New York to other states around the country with regards to economic incentive programs? Who's doing better than us? What would you like to see in your toolbox to be able to better provide the impetus to— What would you like to see in your toolbox to be able to better provide the impetus to get this economic growth here in New York State?
You know, I think, you know, we've been doing very well with advanced manufacturing organizations, but other states are very aggressive. And we, you know, look very carefully at their programs to understand, you know, what it is we're competing around. You know, one of the other things that companies are looking for are, you know, shovel-ready sites that are able to be developed very quickly with enough power and infrastructure to be built out. And those are the kinds of things that we, you know, are working on to make sure that we have more shovel-ready sites for businesses that are looking to locate here.
I'm glad you brought that up with the utility availability or lack thereof in the state. And that's a growing problem and an increasing problem with, certainly with the electrification objectives that the state currently has. And I think that's also part of the reason we're seeing some types of manufacturers leaving the state because of the uncertainty of whether they're going to even get the power that they currently have. But I know from the economic developers I talked to in the seven counties that I represent, getting new electric supply for any type of operation, particularly high-load operations for manufacturing, you know, we're just not getting it. And we're not really getting the investment or the cooperation from the utility companies to get that. What do we need to do to be able to provide that either new energy for a new endeavor? Or how do we assure our existing manufacturers, you know? You mentioned a lot about advanced manufacturing, but we've got a lot of general manufacturing that may not be considered advanced, is still very important, and there's still very good jobs that pay very good family-sustaining wages. And we want to be able to retain those and keep those. And I think energy costs are a driving factor in many decisions these days being made by these types of entities. So what are your suggestions in that regard?
So as you know, you know, we're working on, you know, deployment of sustainable energy sources. We need to do that. We need to work with the utility companies to, you know, help us supply more power. And, you know, working with our colleagues across government, we are always trying to work with companies to help them address their energy needs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're done there. Hi, I'll take my 10 minutes now. Thank you very much. So Hope, you answered questions before that there's a variety of different tax incentives and expenditures that don't go through E S D C, so you can't necessarily answer about those. And we had talked about that before the hearing. But you're the Economic Development Agency for the state. Don't you think it would be better for us as a state if there were one repository of the information from all our different tax incentive expenditure grant programs relating to economic development so that we could actually understand both from a big picture, what we're doing, how much we're spending, what's we're working? Probably that would help us come up with at least a standard way to do the evaluation. You and Senator Skufus were having a little discussion about whose evaluation model's better. And I'll accept that probably nobody has a perfect evaluation model, but wouldn't it be great, oh, sorry, if we had one model that we used across the board for all our programs? And so we wouldn't just feel like we had apples and oranges and that your economic development and you didn't even know what half the oranges are, so to speak. What do you think about that?
So we do have the repository, the one repository for all of the incentive programs. And we're populating that repository with new programs every quarter. The, some of the programs administered by, for example, the Department of Labor, I think those programs are more appropriately administered by them because they're working directly with the employers that are accessing the credits. It's something that, there's some specialty programs that, you know, have been mentioned, like Hire Veteran or Youth Programs. Those are things that the Department of Labor are working more directly with companies on, which is why I think it's better that they are administering those programs.
So one of the standard questions always is who's getting what? And after the Amazon debacle, I'll call that, of a few years ago, we passed a law saying you can't have non-disclosure agreements with companies vis-à-vis tax credits exemptions, et cetera. How is that working? Do we get more, do we have more transparency? Do we have more information? Are you using that law in some way?
Absolutely. We, you know, when I think about the Micron project, for example, we've been very transparent about the details and the contours of that proposal. And we were, you know, very early on, so that's certainly something that we are doing.
Following up actually on Senator Omera's issue of smaller businesses up in his counties, is there a reasonable cap that ought to be placed on how much per job we're willing to give up in tax revenue? I mean, you have all that data from all your programs. You know, some of them seem to show through evaluation, an enormous amount of money per job created, some very little per job. Is there objectively a cap we ought to put on the maximum?
I think that depends because in some of these cases, if you look at the amount per job, you've also got to look at the amount of investment that has been put forward. And so if you're looking at high dollars of investment and potentially, you know, higher cost per job, we certainly want to capture that investment and have that investment happen in New York, which is why I don't necessarily think you want to cap that number.
And my understanding is that a huge amount of the tax incentive expenditure money really just goes through the Tax Department because it's simply how people file their taxes, specifically around reimbursable tax credits. Do you do any kind of evaluation of how much money is going out the door through reimbursable tax credits in programs where they don't necessarily go through you? I happen to know that there are companies that don't owe us any taxes at all, and then we're sending them checks because it's quote-unquote reimbursable credits that they're applying for. And I find that personally outrageous. So is that evaluated in some ways? Anybody taking a look at that?
So I'm sure that the Department of Tax and Finance, what happens with most of our tax credits, if we provide a certificate that the company files with their taxes. So we are not necessarily seeing what the backend of that is.
Okay, my 10 minutes is up. But again, I don't think Tax and Finance does policy of, oh, look, so-and-so is getting reimbursable tax credits when they didn't even owe us any money. They're not in the business of evaluating whether that was a good use of taxpayer money or not. So I really think we need to look hard at those specific credits as well. My 10 minutes are up. I know Senator Skufus says he has another round. I'll double-check with others.
Thank you very much, Senator Krueger. I wonder, has E S D ever commissioned an analysis, a report on any of your incentives that came back and demonstrated a negative return on investment? Has that ever happened?
I have to, not during the time that I've been in the seat, but I can look back and see if that's been the case.
Okay. I'm not aware of, I'm somewhat familiar with the litany of reports that have come back over the years. I've never seen a report that's come back with a signal that demonstrates, hey, maybe we should be re-looking at, you know, how this program is working, which, as an outsider here, as a policymaker not within E S D, seems suspect to me. And I'm sure you can understand why. I'd be suspicious of that. I wonder, do you agree with the findings such as the Startup New York and the Excelsior Jobs Tax Credit findings in this P F M report that demonstrated a positive return on investment? Do you agree with those findings, those outcomes?
Yes.
Do you agree with any of the findings in this report that came back and demonstrated a negative return on investment?
Well, you know, for example, this Empire Theatrical and Musical Program, it states that there is a negative return on investment. As I mentioned, though, for $17 million, there's 100, and for $19 million, there's $117 million of economic activity that is happening upstate that would not happen for not that credit. And so the report states that, and I agree with that. And, you know, haven't looked directly at the model for this program, but definitely agree with the fact that this activity is definitely happening because of the credit.
I guess, if I could just re-up my question, are there any negative return on investments that you concede are poor return on investments that this report found?
Well, I don't have other reports that speak to the analysis on what's been done in some of these programs, so I can't say that I do.
Is return on investment the paramount consideration when you're evaluating whether to continue with an incentive?
It is definitely a factor, but it is not paramount. It depends on the kind of activity that we are trying to incent.
Because, you know, in the case of the Empire State incentive that we're talking a little bit about here, you know, if there is some $100 item that I don't want to buy, I'm not interested in buying, it's $100, but if the government comes in and says, well, we'll give you $98 towards that $100 purchase, and it's only a $2 return on investment, I'm probably going to purchase it. You know, so the suggestion that, okay, this activity wouldn't have happened anyway, I agree. It probably wouldn't have happened anyway. But the question ought to be, are we getting the bang for a buck for it as taxpayers? And at least this report suggests that we are not. If I can ask a broader question as a final question. Beyond, you mentioned eliminating the incentive to redevelop old correctional sites and perhaps a broader look at unused incentives that are on the books. When this report came in, you all looked through it, I'm sure you studied it. Is E S D actively reevaluating any of the incentives that are being used as a result of the findings in this report? Or is it really, you know, just sort of head down, we're going to continue doing what we're doing, we'll look at the ones that, you know, there's no uptake on, but, you know, we're not really re-looking at these other items?
So we're looking at all of our programs. We think evaluation is important. And, you know, we look forward to working with you and the legislative partners during the upcoming session to see if there are modifications that need to be made for some of these programs.
Any offhand that strike you as needing modifications of those incentives that are being used?
So the Employment Incentive and Investment Tax Credit, this E T I P, it is lightly used. It was created before the Office of Strategic Workforce Development was in place. And so we might want to look and see if that is something we can work on.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. For second round, chairs get five, everyone else gets three minutes. Senator Ryan, chair, five minutes.
So my esteemed colleague, Tom Omera, and I, you know, we come from very similar areas. My grandmother lived in Albany, raised her kids working at Remington Rand and American La France. They don't exist anymore.
Almyra.
Almyra, what did I say?
Albany.
I'm sorry. Almyra. But they're gone. And we often talk about, you know, there's two New York states, you know, upstate and New York City, but really, all the recent data shows there's three New York states, you know, New York City, the thruway cities, Albany, Rochester, Syracuse, Buffalo, and then all the other counties and, you know, the Baths, the Almyras, the Auburns, the Jamestown's, they really haven't regained their economic footing still since post-industrialization. So, you know, we have to keep looking at those cities because they're, you know, they're financially just, you know, struggling to keep themselves afloat. And then, you know, back to, you know, what works and what does it. I have businesses come to me all the time to talk to me about things they need, but it's almost nothing that's in the economic development menu. They say they need daycare. You know, can't get people to work because there's no daycare. You know, they say people trade kids in the parking lot who are on shifts. So we haven't really recovered our daycare since the pandemic. But, you know, all the sort of big billions we spend, nothing's touching that. People often talk about, you know, getting skilled workforce. We have so many programs in New York State to address that. I think Empire State Development Program's a good program, but there's all the other ones that aren't under your umbrella. So I think if we had any effort, we could decentralize workforce training. You know, and the others, economic development tool that we don't think of as economic development is SUNY. So, you know, we've disinvested in public education over the last generation. You know, I'm a guy who proudly says I paid $750 a semester to go to college, but it's because every taxpayer in New York State paid for me to go to college. You know, we're losing kids to go to other state universities in Pennsylvania and other states. But once we get them, it's so expensive to lure them back as skilled employees. So the better economic development plan is to keep them, you know, to start with. So I think being able to integrate what E S D does, but also to cross over into the D O L programs and to the other job training programs. So it doesn't seem like anyone's got a big baton here, leading the whole orchestra. And I think that's really what's needed in New York State. And if I could return to, you know, the tax credits that we did for medical research this year, I know the life sciences programs that we have in effect were undersubscribed on those. But trying to increase and to promote university-based research, you know, University of Buffalo's not leaving. The University of Rochester's not leaving. Almyra Colleges, you know, is not leaving. We can control our destiny if we're putting investment through those sources, and they often provide a high wage back into our economy. But, you know, then we just have, you know, we're at the mercy of the international economy, right? Sumitamo Company was in Buffalo, they took over a 100-year-old Dunlop Tire Factory, came in with very little fanfare, didn't want anything from the state, got their employment numbers up to 1,500. And, you know, two Thursdays, they called at nine o'clock and said, we got to be making an announcement tomorrow morning, you know, we're closing. Well, what do you need from us? And the answer was, nothing. You know, it's a global supply chain problem. We have, you know, we're going to be making too much tires over the next 10 years, so you're out. So those are the things we can't control. But the things we can control, I think, you know, if we can concentrate on businesses that are currently in New York State, they're most likely to grow. That's where most of the jobs are anyway. And then really redefine economic development to include things like, you know, if we don't have childcare, then Micron's not going to work. You know, if you don't have people with bachelor's degrees, then Micron's not going to work. So, and if someone could really pick up the baton to say, you know, E S D is running all the programs. If D O L's doing programs, they're reporting back to us. So I think that would be an important function. But I thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, just double-checking. Senator Comrie, three minutes.
Just wanted to go in a little deeper into what Senator Skufus was talking about. Can you envision an opportunity where we do this on a regular basis to work with the legislature, to look at these programs and to update and to work on transparency for these programs as well so that we can make sure that we are spending our dollars wisely? And how would you see that happening?
Absolutely. We'd look forward to working with the legislature on this. About a year ago, we made a decision to start regular reviewing many of our programs. And we put out an RFP, hired a consultant. And probably early next year, we'll start a process of reviewing three of our programs. And so we'll share the results of that work and, you know, look forward to working with you around the review.
Yeah, great. So I know that Senator Skufus has a lot of bills that he's considering this session that we want to do, and it's important that we do spend our dollars in the best way possible. But it's even more critical that these agencies are transparent as well because, you know, going back to my earlier point, the public doesn't know about a lot of these programs. And it's the agency's fault because they're not working with us, they're not working with anybody to tell them that these programs exist. And we put time and effort in creating them, but then they're not being promulgated properly. And I think that's a big deficit. them, but then they're not being promulgated properly, and I think that's a big deficit that we need to clear up. You know, and again, just making sure that there's transparency and proper spending, that there is more focus on making sure that state vendors can benefit from this, and that there's more MWBE participation, because most of them, their MWP participation is around 11%, and that's terrible in this time and age. So, I hope that we can continually work with your office and with the governor's office to clear up these things, so that people can see exactly how the dollars are being spent, how these programs are being promulgated, what we can do to help promulgate them better, because there were some programs that I didn't know about until I read the report, and that's a major problem. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll concede my 40 minutes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I believe it was Senator Murray who asked for a second round, three minutes.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Again, we're talking about incentives and ROI and measuring success, and many of the tax incentives are measured by job creation, but I want to piggyback on something Senator Ryan said and Senator O'Meara said, and that is the difference between job creation and workforce. Senator O'Meara was talking about manufacturers, and your response was in particular that manufacturers are looking for a good, trained workforce, and I think that is what many companies are looking for more than anything. So, the difference between creating jobs and creating a workforce, I think, is vast. So, I'd like your professional opinion here, because we're talking about investing hundreds of millions of dollars, again, through incentives and all this, but would we possibly be better off, because we're not exactly the greatest business environment in this state, we traditionally measure very low, so would we be better off investing maybe hundreds of millions more in CTE, in BOSI's programs, raising the level, which we haven't done in quite some time, raising the level that we can pay instructors at BOSI's, really investing in these to create a workforce, a trained workforce coming out of school to help? Would that serve, because when we're talking about incentives, how big would that be as far as an incentive?
You know, thank you, appreciate the question, Senator. So, we're doing both, because when companies are expanding or they want to locate here, they're asking for, you know, folks that are trained in particular, and so through our Office of Strategic Workforce Development, we work directly with the employers to figure out what the skills are that they need day one, so that people arrive trained on the job through those, with those skills. We're working with our BOSI's, we're working with SUNY community colleges to create these training programs.
So, I'd ask, can you work with us to very closely and keep us informed and give us your recommendations on what we can do to invest more during budget time towards BOSI, CTE, training, things of this nature? I think that would be very, very helpful.
Absolutely.
Thank you again.
Thank you. I'm going to take another five. So, there's a lot of research that shows if you're going to do these kinds of programs, they shouldn't be as of right, and they shouldn't go on forever. So, I actually have a bill that I'll be reintroducing that would set a timeline for each of these types of expenditures, exemptions, having a five-to-seven-year timeline, and then they sunset unless the legislature and the governor decide, no, we should do this because we've evaluated, it's working, or nope, we're not going to continue it. What do you think about that?
You know, I think, you know, it depends on the area. I think that we have to take particular industries into consideration, you know, some industries have a longer time horizon, and so to have a program that is going to, you know, set to expire, that's signaling to the market that that program won't be around, so maybe I don't want to locate in this jurisdiction because it might not be around. So, I think we'd have to look at this very carefully to understand, you know, what kind of activity we want to continue to have, you know, in this economy.
But again, under my bill, if the governor decided, no, we need to continue it, he or she could, or the legislature could re-up it. So, it would give us that kind of safety valve that you're describing, but take us out of this system where I think we're all agreeing, nobody's actually collecting all the data, really doing the kind of evaluation, and frankly, when you have a deadline, it forces you to do the work and be able to justify continuing to spend that. And I would also, even though we talked a little bit, somebody raised the fact that some of the biggest tax expenditures and exemptions are actually going through non-state agencies, through these IDAs and, what is the other one called? IDAs and LDs?
LDCs, yeah.
Yes, thank you. EDCs. So, just an example that I was reading about, where, and again, I raise it because I think we should have almost a common sense no ability. So, we know what Amazon is, we know it's one of the largest companies in the world, we know that all of us order from them every day, and that's its own set of issues for us all, but we're doing it, and we know that they need warehouses to move their product to each of our homes, right? That's their model. We're giving them tax exemptions for their warehouses. They're not not going to build warehouses, because then they wouldn't be able to deliver the products to us. Why would anybody in their right mind allow them to have a tax exemption for building a warehouse when we know exactly what their business model is, we know exactly why they will continue to want to deliver boxes to us every day for the rest of our lives? Why should that be allowed?
You know, with respect to these logistics projects, you know, we've done, ESD has done very few of those. You know, the IDAs have been involved in-
But the state's doing them, right?
The IDAs have been involved in, you know, supporting these warehouses, but not necessarily ESD.
Would you recommend changing the rules of the road for IDAs? I mean, it also turns out, they get their fees to continue based on how many deals they make, so they have every incentive to say yes to everything, and that's how they make their money, and they don't care whether they're eating our tax base alive that way. Do you think we should be changing that?
So, you know, we work very closely with IDAs, they tend to be the entities on the ground who are working with the companies, and, you know, at ESD, we look at what the IDA is providing as an incentive as we incorporate our proposal, and so we're trying to provide the least amount of incentive to secure the project.
And then I think my colleague Sean Ryan raised the retention issues before, and it is, it's even harder to evaluate when you're being told, we'll leave if you don't give us X, because are they bluffing? And I come from New York City, so I've watched this now for most of my life, some large company operating in New York City says, we're going to go across to New Jersey and get a better deal unless you give us a deal. And then I've watched these, what I call state border range wars, go on and the stakes getting bigger and bigger, and it's not a win for anybody, frankly. Have you ever thought about states, like for us, I'd say, New York, Pennsylvania, Connecticut, New Jersey, coming up with a cross-border treaty? We're not doing these anymore, these are ridiculous?
So, you know, what I would like to say is that, you know, with retention, with respect to retention, we've had a few, almost no retention, pure retention packages, so we haven't had to, you know, sort of incent folks to stay here. You know, we take that, if they were to make that threat, we would take it very seriously. We'd look at, you know, whether or not that was a realistic possibility, if they have locations in other states or other localities, and make sure that that was not something that they'd be able to do. With respect to this, talking to other states, I do have regular dialogue with my colleague in Connecticut, New Jersey, we've talked about not going to each other's state and directly soliciting companies, and I have to say that we haven't had this problem in the last couple of years of, you know, poaching from each other.
Okay, and my time is up, and I think that's everybody's time is up for this panel, just take a double check. Then we'd like to all thank you very much for participating with us today. Clearly, we have more questions following, going forward, and I think there's a number of legislative proposals we are all going to be working on in the coming year. So, thank you.
Thank you, look forward to working with you all.
And I'm calling up Panel B, the National Federation of Independent Business, Ashley Ranslow, and the Motion Picture Association, Josh Levin and Brian O'Leary, and, okay.
Business Council's not here, I don't think.
They're not on the list.
Oh, you've got an updated list.
Sorry. I've got an updated list, yes. Great, they did submit testimony.
Yeah.
Okay, and each of you will have, well, each, Ashley will have five minutes, and then the Motion Picture Association, two people will have five minutes. Okay? Have a seat.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're officially at afternoon, good afternoon.
Perfect.
Are we swearing people first?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Oh, yes, please.
I'll get the timing right this time. If you all could raise your right hands, please, do solemnly swear that you'll tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
I do.
Okay.
Please. All right, thank you. And thank you Chairs Ryan, Kruger, and Scoofus for inviting me to be here today. NFIB is a member-driven organization, we represent more than 11,000 small independently-owned businesses across New York. When you think of small business, it's probably a member that we represent, right? Your local hardware store, independent restaurant, florists, barbers, dry cleaners, convenience stores, farmers, roofers, landscapers, you can imagine it, we probably represent somebody in that space. The average size of our member is 10 employees, so we're talking about true small businesses, and they're an important part of New York State's economy. These businesses employ 40% of the state's private sector workforce, over 3 million New Yorkers, their production accounts for nearly half the state's GDP. A staggering 98% of New York's businesses have fewer than 100 employees. A strong, vibrant small business ecosystem supports local tax bases, governments, and schools. 67 cents of every dollar spent at a local small business is reinvested into the community. Small businesses also enrich their communities through financial support, in-kind contributions and volunteerism. 90% of small business owners have financially supported community or civic groups, 63% have provided in-kind contributions, and 76% of all business owners reported volunteering their time, according to a recent NFIB survey. Unfortunately, post-pandemic financial challenges and New York's difficult business environment have taken a toll on small business ecosystem and New York's economy at large. According to Empire State Development, since 2019, New York State has seen a 2.2% growth in small businesses with fewer than 100 employees, but a 2.4% decline in employment among those small businesses. There are nearly 11,000 more small businesses with fewer than 100 employees, but 75,000 fewer employees working in those businesses. More troubling, small businesses with more than 24 employees but fewer than 100 have decreased by 4% over the last four years, and employment has fallen 3.8%. So, reimagining the state's economic development strategy, supporting pro-small business priorities, addressing the state's outstanding UI debt, and stemming the wave of pay frequency lawsuits is the best way to spur economic growth, but I want to focus my testimony on this PFM report specifically. So, New York State has to rethink its economic development strategy, and I really want to thank you all for pushing to commission this report, this independent report, I think we needed to do it, there needs to be accountability, we need to see the data, we need to see the transparency on if these programs are working or not. So, the PFM report commissioned by the Department of Taxation and Finance demonstrates that numerous economic development programs are ineffective or inefficient. Of the more than two dozen tax credits and incentives examined by PFM, less than 10 generated a positive return on investment for the state, and several were inconclusive due to a lack of data. As an example, the film production tax credit is now over $700 million annually, right? We just doubled that recently, a massive sum that goes to multi-billion-dollar corporations rather than small businesses right here in our neighborhoods. The program does not have an overall positive impact on the state's economy, yielding only 15 cents in direct tax revenue and 31 cents for all combined state tax revenue for every dollar invested. The PFM report also concludes that it's highly likely, given the existing workforce and infrastructure, that much of the economic activity would occur in New York State regardless of the credit. We've poured billions of dollars into certain industry sectors or regions with little transparency or oversight, so again, I commend you all for commissioning this report. Investigative reporting, research, and audits have shown that projects such as the $750 million state-built and equipped factory for SolarCity, the 14 million Central New York Film Hub, and most recently, 100 million microchip factory in the Syracuse suburb have not generated the jobs or tax revenue promised. The effectiveness of these initiatives should continue to be subject to scrutiny, so I urge all of you to continue down this road of making sure that we're collecting the data, we're transparent with it, and doing these independent audits of these programs. I also want to just stress that I think these economic development programs need to be looked at, because the money is not necessarily benefiting local independent business. If you look at ESD's portfolio of economic development programs, if you're an existing small business, the only thing that you really qualify for are loan programs. There's no tax incentives, there's no grants, there's no tax credits, anything of that nature. And most of these programs that are loan programs are sometimes useful to finance growth or expansion, but they don't offer the same benefits or advantages of tax credits, grants, or tax incentives. And I just want to be clear, I know my five minutes is almost such, I think they gave me 10 minutes accidentally, so I don't suggest the complete elimination of economic development programs, and there is, they also should not solely be judged by job creation. There are obviously initiatives that can be measured qualitatively, right? Blight, making sure that we're sort of reinvigorating our main streets, there is a good qualitative analysis we can do on those such programs. So, while I'm critical of some of these programs, again, I'm not advocating that we do away with them, I just think that we do need to look at them, and we also need to, the state could step back and look with a critical eye on if these are helping New York's existing small businesses, which make up half of the state's economy. So, with that, I will conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next, we have the Motion Picture Association. We have your testimony, it's long, please don't even attempt to read it, just highlight your bullets, that's a more effective model.
Okay. Thank you, Senator. Co-Chairs Ryan, Kruger, Scoofus, distinguished members of the committee, my name is Brian O'Leary, I'm tax counsel with the Motion Picture Association. We're grateful for the opportunity to appear before you to talk about, of course, the performance of the film production tax credit. As Senator Scoofus mentioned, there have been a number of reports over the life cycle of this program that are evaluated, not just its direct results, but the induced and indirect results. And in the testimony, Senator, as you just pointed out, there are a number of references to some of those reports, and they have done a credible job of, through the beginning of the history of this program, of showing not just the growth in production, but the growth in jobs and union jobs, as well as the investments in infrastructure, and I hope we have enough time to talk about that particular component, because that is actually what makes the New York program unique, as compared to the other 119 incentive programs around the world focused on this industry. This is the only jurisdiction that requires the extensive use of infrastructure to be a qualified production. And also in there is some guidance on what are the results of tourism for this industry, and that's also something that was in the PFM report, as acknowledged, is important, just can't measure it. So, of course, the PFM report is an outlier, as compared to what's in our recent testimony and the citations there. And in fairness to PFM and their cohorts, I think there are a few things that contribute to that. One is, they acknowledge in the report that, and I think we can all acknowledge, it was a substantial undertaking to review all 26 of the programs that are administered by state agencies for incentives and economic development programs generally. That's also referenced in the report, in most cases, they were unable to delve as deeply as they needed to, or would like to, I should say, in these performance of the incentive programs. And in most cases, as it relates to the qualitative benefits of the film incentive program, the information was just not available or too difficult, and respectfully, all of those considerations, I think, contribute to the effect that you see in their report, which I think were challenged by limitations on data, some assumptions that can be called into question, as well as some questionable reliance on some other reports that were not their direct work product. And in effect, what that collectively means is that there was billions of dollars of value that was not taken into account in the PFM report that would have told a more complete picture of the economic story of this industry, and of course, the role that the film tax credit plays. And you can start with just the very beginning of the program. So, if you were able to access the archives of ESD, you would see this program in 2004 was a 600 see this program in 2004 was a $600 million program. By 2022, the last year of the PFM analysis, it was a $5.5 billion. This is just the direct spending. So that trajectory, and you can look over the course of ESD quarterly data, as Commissioner Knight referenced, and it will tell you, you can see when the program ran out of money, you can see what happened during COVID, you can see what happened during the strikes. But otherwise, there is this unbroken continuum of growth, which is not reflected in the PFM report, and perhaps because they didn't have access to that information. But in addition, some of those other reports do tell some important messages about job creation. And there is an HRNA report from 2018, I acknowledge it's a little bit aged now, but from 2004 to 2018, HRNA chronicled the growth of labor. IATSE, which is the stage mechanics, had a growth of 78% in their workforce. They also had a three-and-a-half times increase of hours worked per individual. And then with the Teamsters, which again, you probably know are the transportation workers for the film industry, they had a two-and-a-half times increase in workforce during that same period, and three-and-a-half times increase in their benefits. That's not captured in PFM. And in fact, if you look at Table 1 in that report, PFM would tell you that industry growth was flat in terms of jobs, about six jobs per thousand in the New York economy during this measurement period, during their measurement period. So there is a different story to be told. And just to stay with HRNA for a moment, the report will conclude that one out of every three jobs in the industry in the United States was originated in New York State during this period, and 55% of growth for the New York film industry from 2004 to 2018 as compared to the rest of the economy's film industry across the country, which was 19%. Now, PFM would tell you that New York actually underperformed the national economy. I'm merely suggesting to you that there is information from other reports that would tell a more complete picture. So I realize I'm out of time.
Thank you. Hi.
I guess I just want to say thank you to the Senators for being here today, and thank you to my colleague, Brian, for his diligence in reviewing the analysis of the Film Tax Credit. The Motion Picture Association appreciates the opportunity to promote such a culturally significant industry and its impact throughout the Empire State. I'm Josh Levin, Vice President of Government Affairs for the MPA. While we believe there are serious shortcomings to the analysis findings and that the Film Tax Credit provides impressive returns for the state, we also want to zoom out and reflect on the positive implications of what a robust film industry means for the state. At its core, this economic development program is an opportunity to infuse tax revenue into local towns and cities by way of an industry that hires union wage workers while procuring tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars in local goods and services that are taxed to support the local municipalities. And when a film and television and streaming show comes to town, it can mean not only local and international talent coming to a neighborhood, but an ongoing sense of community pride along with the promotion of the community that can create cultural touchstones for tourism, economic activity reverberating for decades to come. These sentiments translate into polling data by the highly reputable Echelon Insights firm that found 85% of New Yorkers agree that film production is good for the state, with 70% supporting the incentive program. We can all agree that this level of bipartisan support is rare in New York, or anywhere else for that matter. Indeed, if local press and fanfare is any guide, New Yorkers are excited about the economic tourism and cultural impact that often comes with a film studio is built or a shoot comes to town. We're excited to keep this incentive program working for New Yorkers and look forward to answering your questions. Thank you.
I feel like I should give you back three more minutes. Did I cut you off because it was 10 minutes for the two of you?
Yeah.
Are you good?
I'll take it if I'm not wearing out my welcome. So, I mentioned about infrastructure, and I just want to spend a moment, so maybe not all three minutes, but there is a lot of discussion about how this industry is a transient industry. And yes, each project has to stand on its own, and when it's completed, it moves on. And the idea is that you build an industry by getting repeat business, what Josh was just talking about. One thing that makes New York really demonstrably different is the idea that, and this is the origin of this program, you must use infrastructure as a production. You're welcome to come and shoot two weeks on New York streets, but if that's all you're doing, you're not earning a credit. And that will happen. But what must happen, if you're going to earn a credit in this state, is you must do 75% of your stage work at a qualified production facility in New York. So what does that mean? In 2005, there was 900,000 square feet of studio space. There were 11 sound stages, and there were 61 sound stages, there were 11 soundstage facilities, 61 stages across the state. So in 2022, there is 2.5 billion square feet of soundstage space. There is over 450 production facility stages that are certified by ESD around New York. A lot of that, of course, is concentrated in New York State. And what's important about that is, there is a report, again, in our written testimony from NYU that talks about just the economic effect of construction of sound stages from 2019 to 2022, a billion dollars and 6,000 construction jobs associated with building those stages. Right now, there are, in four locations in Queens and in Brooklyn, there are projects that are underway that will, again, cost $800 million to construct. These are sound stages. The only reason those investments are being made is because it's a condition of eligibility under the New York program. So when we talk about the PFM report, I think any new literature on this program is an important contribution. It has to be put in context. And I talked about the limitations on that assessment, and there's a lot that hasn't been taken into account that I think is very important, if you're going to think about this industry and its relationship with New York State. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. I believe Senator Scoofus is in line.
Thanks very much for all of your testimony, and appreciate your presence here. Let me start, Mr. Levin, I think it is. You cited, in passing, some polling from, I think, Echelon. Who commissioned that poll?
We did.
Got it. Just wanted to make sure that that, I assume that was the case, but do you happen to have the phrasing of the question, the top-line question that gauges whether there's public support for this tax credit?
I don't have it or recall it offhand, but we can get that too.
Okay, because I've seen a plethora of polling that contradicts the results that you shared, but it was commissioned by the MPA. Understood. For both of you at the MPA, let's assume there's an individual in New York who, over the course of, let's say, a 30-year career, works at various productions over that time that are all supported by the Film Tax Credit. I've seen numbers in the range of, for one single stint along that 30-year career, the taxpayers underwrite to the tune of about $75,000 per each job. If you contest that, please let me know. But is it fair to then assume that the total taxpayer expense associated with that one career, because, you know, we oftentimes talk about, like, how many jobs are created? That's a very temporary job each shot the tax credit is applied to. Is it 30 times 75,000? Is that how much we're paying for one career in this industry with the Film Tax Credit?
So, thank you, Senator, for your question. On that, just in terms of the math, so if you're...
That's a little over $2 million, by the way, in case anyone's interested.
He's worth every penny, or she's worth every penny. But to answer your question directly, as far as the cost per job, I would direct you to Commissioner Knight's comments about the REMI study, which was also commissioned and authorized by New York State government. And that report would tell you that for every job created, the state gets back $13,000. State and local taxes are $13,000 per job created. So what's the difference between those two numbers? It's a matter of what is built into your model. And on the numbers that you just described, there are some assumptions that are made on terms of what constitutes a full-time equivalent and what constitutes the taxes associated with that. So if you're going to commission, respectfully, if an economic impact report is going to be commissioned, what is the scope of work? What is the data sets that are going into it? What is the outputs, not that you're looking for, but what are the outputs that you're expecting? And part of what's important about this is that if you're looking at the tax ROI, what I've just described to you is the total taxes generated in 2022 based on the REMI model, and again, a different model than what the team at PFM and their cohorts used. A little more sophisticated, but they both have a great utility. So that is my response, at least to that point. And as far as that individual that you're referring to, the beauty of this industry, and actually, some of the reports that are in there talk about the clustering effect, in success, there are collateral benefits. So if that crew member is not working on a scripted series that is earning a tax credit, and that crew member wants to take another opportunity while that show is on hiatus, they're welcome to, because this industry has created a virtual cycle, virtuous cycle of opportunity for non-credit-eligible activity in New York State that builds up as a result of all that.
In your written testimony, you cite four analyses that you believe demonstrate a positive return on investment. Just very briefly, who commissioned the Ernst &amp; Young report?
So the 2009 Ernst &amp; Young report, I think it was Motion Picture Association, the Governor's Film Office.
You commissioned it. The HRNA report, who commissioned that?
So, the labor union organization.
Another industry stakeholder who benefits from the tax credit. The Camoyne Associates report?
That's ESD.
Got it. We heard from them just before. The REMI report?
Also ESD.
Understood. So there are no, there are no reports here that you cite that were not commissioned by either the administrator or beneficiaries of this tax credit. I, you know, and I've looked a lot, I've got into the weeds quite a bit on the various academic and otherwise reports that are out there on film tax credit. It's not just in New York, but around the state. Obviously, we have the one from earlier this year. I'm looking here, the Louisiana Legislative Auditor cited that the program does not generate enough state tax revenue to make up for revenue that the state loses. Georgia Audit notes that while, yes, the Film Tax Credit induces substantial economic activity in the state, but costs taxpayers nearly $1 billion annually with a return on investment of only 19 cents per dollar. I have a list as long as my arm of academic studies that refute the ones that you have commissioned. I guess my question is, do you have any totally independent, from industry, from ESD, from administrators of these tax credits, reports, studies that validate your claim that there is a positive return on investment?
For New York State? I think we've shared, Senator, if that's the specific question you're asking for New York State, I'll go back and look. I think we've covered, so there, actually, no. There's been references from the Controller's Office, from the Department of Labor that have showed positive job creation for this industry.
I'm not talking about job creation, I'm talking about return on investment to the taxpayer.
So, to the taxpayer? I think we've, I think we've pretty much covered the reports that have been out there. In New York State, they're certainly from other jurisdictions. And one we didn't get to, but we should certainly talk about in terms of competition, I know we've talked about states, we've talked about foreign governments. If you want one of the more compelling sources of objective data, go to the UK report, which the forward is by the Chancellor of the Escheker, the guy who holds the money. And it shows a very positive financial return, a very positive economic return. So there are reports.
I would like to not have to go outside the country to find, you know, a little bit of data that supports this tax credit, but I will be cut off. Thank you.
I will, we'll allow you a second round. Chair Ryan, five minutes.
Thank you, Ashley, for your testimony. I'm going to try to judicially use four minutes to talk to you and one minute for a question with my other folks. So I appreciate working with your organization, because you come in and talk to us about essentially Main Street businesses, small machine shops, roofers, florists. You've got them all. Do any of your folks avail themselves to, you know, these multi-billion-dollar economic development programs through Empire State?
No. I mean, if you look at the programs that are available through ESD, if you're a small, existing small business owner with a low number of employees, 10, 15, you're not going to qualify for these tax credit or tax or grants or any of that.
And remind me, how many small businesses there are in New York State?
Over 500,000.
And they employ how many people?
3 million.
So a substantial part of our state economy has nothing to do with any Empire State Development subsidies or grants?
Correct.
So how are you able to do it without free government money?
It's hard. It's really hard. When you look at the profit margins of a small business owner, you're looking at 3% to 5%, right? I mean, these are not highly profitable businesses. What they're bringing in, they're pouring back out, right, in terms of their employees, their expenses that they have to pay. And it's tough sledding. I invite anyone to go and talk to a small business owner at any time and ask them how it is to do business in New York, and they will tell you it's extraordinarily difficult.
But they're the job creators, and in many ways, wealth creators in our community.
Yes, and give back by sizable margins to their community.
Do they have an understanding that part of their tax burden they pay is so the state can give their tax dollars to other companies?
And I think that's a point of contention, for sure, because while there are, there's two sides to the coin. While it's important that we don't continue to lose businesses in New York State, right, you represent the tire manufacturer. Losing a business and 1,500 jobs in Western New York is not helpful to the general economy, right? If you've got 1,500 people unemployed, they're probably not going to go to their local restaurant and go out to dinner, right? So there is a general sense that we need to make sure the economy is running and that we, there is a place for large corporations. We need them, and we need them to keep, you know, retain jobs here. But at the same time, you have a lot of money, hundreds of millions of dollars, and I pick on the Film Production Tax Credit, all due respect, but it's almost...
They're close at hand.
Right. I mean, it's almost 3/4 of a billion dollars that's going out every single year. This is a small business owner's hard-earned money, right? They are, they are working day in and day out to run their business, provide tax revenue to the state that they don't ever get back. And in effect, in some cases, have to spend more, and I'm going to pick on unemployment insurance, right? Where businesses are paying an extra $400 per employee in New York right now over pre-pandemic levels. So not only are they paying an extraordinary amount in taxes, they're paying even more, and they don't get a cent back.
Why are they paying more?
Because the state's in debt by $6 billion.
So we could take some of the money that we were giving to places like Tesla and Amazon and pay our unemployment with it instead?
Yeah, I mean, I think that there needs to be a hard look at how we're, how we're spending our money. Are we getting a good return on investment? And is that money better spent elsewhere to improve the state's economy? Look, if you address the UI issue, you're not just helping small businesses, you're helping the economy in general, because New York businesses are paying these higher UI taxes, and our counterparts in New Jersey, Connecticut, Pennsylvania, Massachusetts are not paying that, right? So there is an argument to be made that we need to look at the broader, we need to take a step back and look at the broader picture here and address these cost drivers in our economy that will help small businesses, but will also help the economy at large.
So that UI proposal would level the playing field?
Absolutely.
So everyone would be on the same footing, as opposed to, you know, recently, there was a tax credit, tax abatement given to an Amazon to open up.
Right.
And at that hearing, an optometrist came in and said, "I've had business on Main Street for 28 years. I pay my full taxes every year. I got to pay more? So Elon Musk pays nothing?"
And I think there's a general frustration among small business owners that, yeah, look, they're paying their taxes, they're not getting, they're not getting tax breaks from the state, they're not getting tax credits, they're not getting...
Because they're in the supply and demand economy.
Right. They're not, they're not getting anything, and then, you know, they're barely getting by, and there is this growing frustration among small business owners that they're working really hard and they can't get ahead.
What can we do for small business owners?
I have a long list, Senator, so I'll follow up with you.
And unfortunately, you took up the time, and she can't tell you now. But I might ask her the same question a little bit.
Yes, thank you.
Senator Murray.
Thank you, Chairwoman. By the way, 37 other states paid off their UI loans.
Yes.
So...
I'm sorry, it's three minutes for non-chairs. Sorry, Senator Murray.
That's fine, okay. Mr. O'Leary, you had brought up crews and construction and infrastructure and building, you know, sound stages and things like this. Is workforce part of an incentive to the film industry? A good trained workforce?
Yes, Senator, it is important. And in fact, New York has one of the best film crews. I think that is, that you can take judicial notice of. That is important.
Okay, so this is what drives me crazy here. We talk about our business environment here and what we do to hurt businesses. So we're spending over $700 million on incentives for the film industry to come here and do their productions and build their sound stages and all these wonderful things. Yet yesterday, I was with one of the workers who goes into the city from Long Island, who is now going to get pounded with congestion pricing and get $2,500 a year out of his pocket with no return, no saving to him, no help for him, just to come in and do his job and be part of the workforce that you say you want here. So on the one hand, we're spending $700 million to give incentives to bring you here, but yet we're... you here, but yet we're hurting your very workforce that you need. I mean, isn't that a tremendous contradiction? What would happen if you didn't have that workforce? What happens if he can't make it in there?
So, Senator, I'll at least answer the question on the importance of workforce, and I'll stay away from congestion pricing for this.
I'll take all the congestion pricing part. You go ahead.
I think there's actually a few components, and you've touched on them. The rest of the world, and I totally appreciate much of the focus here is on other states, but it is the world has learned a lot from the experiences and the success of New York, and they are investing in building workforce. I'm biased, of course. I think we have just about the best workforce in the world. And we also have, without these small businesses and just to my colleague on the far right, this industry can't survive without the support of small business. And I, Senator Scoofus, in respect, the MPA has a statistic that says nine out of every 10 job, businesses that we contract with are small businesses, 10 or fewer. It is MPA data, but it is based on production reports. So if you think of those two components and how this industry spends its money, yes, it spends its money on production infrastructure, supporting the development of sound stages. It spends its money on a workforce that is world-class. But to actually support these productions, they spend tens of millions of dollars on small business, which are, again, the supply chain for this industry wherever you are in New York State.
My time's up. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Comrie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the MPA, I'm sorry, I'm wasting my time. But how can you explain your horrible numbers on MWBE and minority purchasing? And what can you do to improve those numbers? You talked about supporting small businesses, but your MWB, your numbers on casual employees. I had an employee that came to my office the other day. He hasn't worked in eight months because he's a casual employee. What is the MPA doing to improve those types of situations?
I mean, I think we're leaning into the state. The state recently started a Empire State Development, and the Governor's Film Office started a MWBE vendor database. I think we look to even like New York City and their MWBE work, database with, in conjunction with the New York City Mayor's Office of Media Entertainment. A lot of this is a matter of muscle memory going to whom you need for these sorts of projects that are, you know, where there's quick turnaround. So it is a matter of, you know, our individual members, member companies also seeking better goals and initiatives. So I think together with the film offices and our members, we're always trying to measure ourselves better and do better year in and year out.
Also, with the training modules and opportunities for people to learn in that industry has also been powerful from the MPA. And I would hope to see better opportunities for young people linking up with our high schools and colleges to great training program. We have NYU, but that's it. You know, we need to make sure that there's better participation from the MPA. As a former council member, I helped back in 2002 to create the film tax credit because I thought that was going to happen. I believe in it. But the numbers have been horrible. And I would need to see some specific programming that's being done. Muscle memory only leads to people that go to familiar places, but we need to make sure that there's a real opportunity to spread the wealth. To, I've got a couple of seconds left, but to the NIFIB, I would love to hear what you need for small businesses because you're right, the government is not doing enough to help, and we need to make sure we're doing more to give our small businesses an opportunity to survive. We haven't heard it specifically. I've been one and happy to sponsor any legislation that you feel we need to help small businesses. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. Senator Kevin Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First question to the MPA. Just reading through the written testimony here, you talk about what PFM gets wrong, specifically the BLS classification, and that's the reason why there wasn't a positive rate of return. Can you expand on that?
So there, yeah, Senator, so there are two industry classifications that PFM uses. It's 51 to 11 and 51 to 19. And those are, they track businesses that have payroll employees that make contributions into the unemployment insurance funds for a state. Those are wage and salary workers. The film industry's workers, to the comments that were made earlier, they go from project to project. Film crews, the overwhelming majority of cast and crew are hired on a per-project basis. They are not hired by the establishments that are in those two codes. So if you want to measure the trajectory or the decline of film and television production, which is the classification of business that is receiving an incentive, that those two classifications will not capture that information. They're entertainment service classifications, independent contractor service classifications. So it is one of the footfalls, I would submit, for the PFM report as reflected in our written testimony.
Do you know why PFM would not use more classifications and just limited it to just those two classifications to do an ROI?
In fairness to them, I would only be speculating, but it is a comment, in fact, the reports that they cite to as support for their position acknowledge in their literature, there's a Pennsylvania report that acknowledges the very point I'm describing, which is those classifications will not capture the film crew and cast member positions. So sole proprietors and actors and crew members that I described in the unions in the HRNA report. It could simply be a function of lack of familiarity with how to actually capture this data. And again, I'll stay within the US borders generally, but I want to get back to the UK just for a moment. The reason why I come back to that is that because of the difficulty that I'm just describing to you, the UK government has created a program, a software, that actually looks at each production, which is why, as compared to the 2022 data, that PFM would tell you, in an epic year for New York production, where we generated $5.5 billion of spending, there were only 7,700 jobs. And they acknowledge it. For some reason, they can't explain, the numbers go down. It's the lowest year that they've recorded over 10 years. Same period, same production spend, the UK, and it may be in a footnote in our report, 46,000 direct jobs. US workers, New York workers, very efficient. It's very difficult to reconcile those two if you don't take into account what I've just described, the classifications.
Thank you. Senator Tom Amara.
Thank you. Thank you all for your testimony here today and being with us. Now, on the film production tax credit, you know, I can tell you from, from a representative that represents a southern tier, very rural in Finger Lakes, New York, it's not real popular throughout my district from that perspective. But I do want to give some credit where some credit is due, and that is you talk about the stage productions, construction and all that, and there has been a significant amount of purchasing from some of those contractors from, from a manufacturer in my district, from Vaultcraft Steel in Schimong, New York, part of Nucor Steel, manufacturers of Truss and Joyce and steel decking, that I understand has been quite a bit of business from that that has gone into that effort. So I appreciate that, that part of it at least. I think we can certainly argue about the amount and extent that's going towards this, but it's, really has to do with the overall environment of doing business in New York State, you know. And look, we got other states, they're all trying to compete for the same thing. Actually, in your written testimony, and I want to give you a little chance to expound upon this, you say there's a point where direct incentives cannot outweigh the overall tax regulatory and anti-business environment created in Albany. You've talked about the UI fund, something that I've spoken greatly about for many years in the budget process in New York since COVID, when, as Senator Murray said, some 37 businesses, some 37 states in this country saw fit to use a portion of their federal COVID money to pay that down. And I believe we should be paying that off in New York. Aside from that one thing in particular, I just, can you comment some of the other major obstacles and hindrances for business growth in New York with regards to the policies coming out of Albany?
Sure. Look, unemployment insurance is obviously a big issue and important issue because it is costing about an extra $400 per employee per year over pre-pandemic levels. You also have issues around taxes. I mean, if you look at how small businesses are treated compared to sort of corporations on the tax level, you know, I'll bring up manufacturers, for example. We zeroed out the tax rate for large C corp manufacturers to try and attract more manufacturers to New York. We haven't done the same thing on the small manufacturing side, right? We have S Corps LLC, small manufacturers who are paying higher tax rates. So we need to do more on the tax side of things for, to help small businesses. And we also need to do more on the regulatory side of things. I think every time we pass legislation, we sort of put our blinders on and we look at, okay, well, it's not that big of a deal in this one area. But when you aggregate all of them, when you pass seven to 10 bills, that's an additional hurdle or burden, it has an aggregating effect when you do it year after year after year. And small businesses don't have human resource. They don't have lawyers. They're often doing this on their own, and that makes it hard. So those are some of the things that we really need to get at.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take my five. Thank you. I'll continue with you, Ashley.
Sure.
So I've actually been known to say, I even did it on the floor of the Senate once, and I got standing ovation from Republicans, which scared me, that I actually don't know why the state is deciding to be a venture capital company and choose winners and losers to give tax money away to or exempt from taxes. And that I actually believe that probably if we just cut out most of these tax exemption expenditures, we could reduce across the board our business tax costs. And then they could compete in a capitalist model, and some would win and some would lose. Because I'm not sure government's supposed to be in the business of choosing who we invest in, although I do think that there's a value to tax exemptions and expenditures to motivate public policy behavior we want to see. Like, we want to see businesses move to green energy. So, okay, let's give them incentives and discounted costs for modernizing to green energy. We want to see businesses do other things. Let's incentivize that. I don't know why we give tax incentives to oil and gas companies to the tune of over $1 billion a year. I'm pretty damn sure none of us think we're supposed to be using oil and gas. So following up on Senator Ryan's question, what are the kinds of things you think we ought to be doing that will assist smaller businesses? Because I, like he, agree, the evidence is you are the job creators. Small and medium-sized businesses are the job creators, and we do want to make sure that you're there and spread out throughout the state. So can you just give me a couple of examples of your top priorities?
Sure. So I think a couple, right, building on what I was talking to your colleague about, so unemployment insurance, right, we have to address that debt. It's dragging down the state's economy. And it stands at $6 billion. It's an extra $400 per employee per year that businesses are paying. We've got to address that. We can't let that continue, especially if we ever plunge back into a recession, right? We're going to be borrowing money on top of borrowed money, right? And we're just going to continue this cycle. But we have to talk about tax parity. There needs to be more tax parity between small businesses and larger businesses. We've done a decent job over the last several years of doing some small business tax cuts, but there could be more. And to your point about picking winners and losers, we share the same perspective, that New York does not have a great track record in deciding who to invest in and who not to invest in. And we need to do a better job of deciding where those tax dollars go. And we would agree, you're better off using that money to address the broader business environment than you are just deciding where to invest. So I would agree with that. Like, your colleagues agree with you on that sentiment. We should not be using economic development incentives as we see fit and deciding that this business is worthy of it and this business isn't, and going forward with that. So that's a good way of doing it. And then also, we need to look at other cost drivers. Health insurance is extremely expensive in New York. We tax health insurance companies $6.5 billion in the state. That is part of the reason health insurance is expensive. It's not the only reason, but it is part of the reason. Those taxes are passed along. And what people don't realize oftentimes is those taxes really hit small businesses hardest because they can't self-insure like larger companies can and kind of avoid some of the cost drivers in the health insurance market. Small businesses have to absorb that. We also need to look at insurance costs. Insurance costs are extremely high in New York compared to other states. And there are some low-hanging fruit options to try to address some of those costs. We need to address fraud in the insurance system. We need to address abuse. And those are some areas that, and I can give you more specifics. And bills that many of your colleagues sponsor, and I think that there is much improvement that can be done to help small businesses generally.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have 35 seconds. I don't even want to start with you all yet, 35 seconds. So I'm going to give that to Senator Scalo, Senator Scalo Scoofus. It's my birthday.
That's a bad one.
Yeah, sorry. I would say too much drinking, but I drink. Senator Scoofus.
Thank you, Senator Krueger. First for Ashley, I believe you answered this, but I just want to make sure I'm clear, and I want to put a fine point on it. On the net, do you believe that for small businesses, the film tax credit, given the purported trickle-down impact that we oftentimes hear from advocates versus the cost, on the net, is the program positive or negative for New York's small business community?
I would say generally negative, right? I'll just give you one example, right? A film crew comes in for a week to film somewhere on location, let's say Albany. Is that good for restaurants and retailers for that one week? Sure, right? People are going out to buy their coffees and whatever. But you can't build a business model off of that, right? I can't open a coffee shop because one week out of the year, somebody's filming there, right? So it's generally not, for 3/4 of a billion dollars, I question how much that's really helping small businesses generally.
Thank you for that answer. And, you know, hopefully, the folks who send handpicked advocates to our offices claiming to speak for the small business community, touting, you know, how important this film tax credit is, I, you know, will remember that the actual organization that remembers, that represents small businesses strenuously disagrees. For the MPA, I see last month Gavin Newsom in California announced he is going to be pursuing a significant expansion of their film tax credit from $330 million capped to $750 million annually. If I'm not mistaken, New Jersey in the past couple or several years has made their program more generous. New York, obviously, made our program more generous this past year. I wonder, do you have any sensitivity or mindfulness? Because, you know, you know what happens when this type of news breaks like California's last month is all the other states then say, oh, well, they increased their amount. We've got to look to increase our amount. They increased their reimbursement from 30% to 40%. We should look at our increasing our reimbursement from 30% to 45%. And there's this perpetual race to the bottom, as I would characterize it. And at the end of the day, you know, the folks who win are the industry stakeholders. Do you have any sensitivity to that pinging and ponging that is happening all over the country and perhaps worldwide, that I can't speak to, that just makes these programs more and more generous in the interest of better competing with some other program that was just made more generous?
Thank you, Senator.
Any sensitivity to taxpayers in these states, these jurisdictions?
So, Senator, if I may, I'll go back to Commissioner Knight's comments, which is, in all of your economic development programs, but since you asked me about the film tax credit, you absolutely need to think about what's happening outside New York's borders, which is not just what's happening across the river, but around the world, and making sure that you're benchmarking. There will be a point. And for example, I keep coming back to infrastructure. New York has been the only program that makes this requirement. There has been discussion over the years about how do we be more competitive? Let's take down this requirement. But New York has held firm. Why? Because it's one of the foundations of this program's success.
I understand. You've made that point a couple of times. I appreciate that. Just maybe a quick question that'll lead me to another. How critical do you believe, briefly, how critical do you believe these incentives are to filming actually happening generally? I'm not talking about, you know, a program in a specific state. Could the filming be happening without any incentives? Say tomorrow, every jurisdiction got rid of its film tax credit in the world. That's not going to happen. But let's say it did. Would filming stop?
If filming was a subsidy, if film incentives was a subsidy, then the theory would be yes. But no, there would be less of it for sure, and it would be in different locations. That's what incentives do is they drive behavior.
How much less, do you think? Is it on the margins? Or a half would disappear if we weren't paying for these productions? Is it on the margins, or a half would disappear if we weren't paying for these productions to the tune of 30%, 40%?
So the, the way the New York program works, it's not 30% or 40% of your--
Some states are.
Oh, there are some jurisdictions that are even more than that. And that's New York's competition. I totally acknowledge that point. It's hard to know what the future's going to look like, because competition, if you just, even if you don't read the industry trades, you read the papers and know that competition is enormous. And that's for viewers, consumers, so I can't tell you--
Well, it's enormous because of these Hunger Games that you are helping perpetuate around the country. Am I wrong in characterizing it that way? That's why the competition is enormous.
So there are 120 incentive programs around the world, Senator. I assure you that governments are making decisions on how to spend their money based on their own experience--
And you're hiring lobbyists to make these programs more generous, which perpetuates that competition.
So I would submit to you that there are the programs around the world that have succeeded, I would expect will continue to sustain themselves. And in the face of this competition, what happens next year and the year after we're coming out of these industry strikes, we'll see the size of the industry. But New York is set up to succeed as long as it's got the foundations, a competitive incentive. I know that's, that is a controversial point, but a competitive incentive, a world-class workforce, small businesses that support this industry around the state, as well as infrastructure.
Thank you.
Thank you. In defense of lobbyists, if we do away with them, half the people in this building would be out of work. Just saying.
And clearing myself.
Sorry. Any other question? Oh, Senator, oh, I'm sorry. It's round two, right? Round two for both? Okay, I'm going to let Senator Ryan go first.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I have a question for the MPA folks. A lot of times in economic development, we have these theories that we come in with government money to, you know, prime the pump, and then to get the businesses on their feet, and then we withdraw and eliminate subsidies. Is that what we're talking about with your industry?
So Senator, with respect to film and television production, each year, each project stands on its own. What does stay in place is the infrastructure that we've continued to focus on.
What's that?
The, the facilities, the production facility. So that stays in place, but each project rises and falls based on its own commercial success. So priming--
But does that mean then, after the infrastructure is built, then you'll be taxed just like Ashley's folks?
So after the infrastructure is built, that's what keeps the business recurring and in a position where you can stay longer?
Without a subsidy?
There are no subsidies, it's an incentive to attract investment?
Without a credit? Will the credit disappear once the infrastructure is put in place?
I think this gets to Senator Schoofus's question. So if New York eliminated, this is not--
That's not my question. My question is, are we endeavoring to build the sustainable economy, one that can work in the free market without a credit? Or are we saying we have to have a credit, you know, for the, as long as we want this industry, we have to pay for it? It doesn't disappear. Like the Micron example, we're going to put this capital into Micron, they're going to build the facility, the infrastructure, employ these people, but then it, it goes away. Like, we don't keep giving them money. The idea is they'll be able to compete in the world's market, and those jobs would be here because we made this big investment. Is it ever going to go away, or are we always, you know, is this like my, you know, cross-country skiing, as soon as you stop, it all go, it all goes away?
So Senator, in terms of what happens to New York's incentive in the future, it, it can very well be informed by what happens outside of New York. So if New York were to--
Just to be clear, I mean, just asking you a simple question. Like, I don't really understand your business. Like, you know, we usually invest in infrastructure, we help somebody get the facility going, and then they just run it, because they said they can compete in the world. But are we saying for, for you folks, that we only going to get this industry here as long as we always give the tax credit?
So maybe I'll answer, I'll try to answer your question this way. Every program that I described around the world does not prime the pump for the film and television industry. What they look at is, what project are you bringing to the state? Putting aside infrastructure, putting aside crews, everything else, I have a film or a series that I'm going to bring to the state. In success, I will be able to attract it here. And if, if the state--
But only if the credit continues without end?
So in this competitive environment, it would be very difficult.
I think the answer is yes, but we'll just cut it short. Ashley, do we have any successes last year for your folks?
In the retail theft space, there was some successes, right? We needed, particularly for retailers, we needed to crack down on retail theft. I will give one critique, the commercial security tax credit, which was geared towards small businesses. And this gets to access to programs. I think that, so the application period for that is already closed. I think most small retailers had no idea that that tax credit existed. It was through DCJS, which was not a, a agency that I think a small business owner would think to go to for said tax credit. So there, when we talk about access to programs, New York needs to do a much better job of making sure that businesses are aware of such tax credits that they could qualify for. I think there's also, it's a somewhat of a critique, there was an effort to repeal COVID sick leave this past year, which was a drag on business owners. No other state still had COVID-paid sick leave. It was sort of done. It was done, but with a very, very long off-ramp, I would say. So more should be done.
Okay. Well, I look forward to working with you in the upcoming session to continue to focus on, you know, these issues. So thanks for your testimony today.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Murray, you have--
Thank you, Chairwoman. Ms. Ranzello, so I want to talk about something you had said about the small businesses, your members not being able to participate in a lot of these incentive programs. The reason we're here is we're talking about ROI and are these working, which ones are, which ones aren't. I'd like your opinion. If we were to just simply set the benchmarks, like, like, just simplify the process here and set the benchmarks for, look, this particular program will be for job creation. So any company, regardless of size, if you were able to increase your, your workforce by, say, 20%, you can qualify. If we were to open something up like that, and not just focus on the big ones, which many times end up being abysmal failures, if we were to open that up, how beneficial, what, what type of an impact would that have on the business environment and our economy?
I think that's a thoughtful approach. You know, I'd have to do some more digging on it, but I think that's an excellent point. And I'll point to the PFM study. They put this in, and I thought, it really struck me. Said it's smart incentives help businesses overcome practical barriers to growth. And customized assistance for locally-owned, small- and medium-sized businesses can have a significant impact, right? PFM put that in their report. And that really spoke volumes to me, right? So much the time, it's, businesses need help with capital investments, purchasing equipment, right? And, you know, to your point, is there a way to look at these programs and tailor these programs in a way that we're looking at, yes, jobs created are important, but there are other factors, qualitative factors, we need to look at. Are we growing the small business economy? Are we helping expand the small business economy? Are we making sure that small businesses, whose businesses are doing okay, are expanding here? I can give you so many examples of some small business owners in New York who are expanding, but they're not expanding here.
Right.
And they're not expanding here for a variety of reasons. But one, they're not eligible for programs.
Right.
Two, the cost of doing business here is too high, and it's just easier to do it elsewhere. But to your point, I think that's a valid point, and one that should be looked at and discussed.
And, and we talk about ESD on the state level, and maybe that's something that would be kind of a micro, you know, very, very tough for them to oversee, so maybe it flows. I know we have discussions about IDAs and, and all, and I think personally, as long as the accountability is there, that's the purpose of them. Because locally, they can focus on a small business where, again, overseeing through ESD might be too big.
Sure.
So maybe we flow it through there as a way to, to focus on the small businesses.
Yes, absolutely. I mean, look, you've got hundreds of thousands of businesses, millions of businesses, right? Certainly, ESD cannot field everything, right? So yes, there's got to be a way, a mechanism to be able to do that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I believe that is the closing questions for this panel. Thank you very much for being with us today.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we are going to call up Panel C, New Yorkers for Fiscal Fairness, Ron Deutsch, Strong Economy for All Coalition, Michael Kink, and Citizens Budget Commission, Sean Campion. And each member of this panel is going to have five minutes. Okay, we'll just get our paperwork set up. Okay. Oh, thank you. Okay, should we just go down the line in the order you were in? Ron Deutsch first?
Let me--
Okay. Oh, wait, sorry, we have to swear you in.
Sign people in.
Or swear them in.
Yeah.
Swear.
Whatever you want.
Yeah, yeah, if you could raise your right hand.
There'd be a lot of swearing.
Do you solemnly swear that you'll tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now--
All right.
Each of you will have five minutes, and then we will have our, our time to ask all of your questions. Great.
All right. Well, I will speed through this. I want to thank you all for allowing me to speak here today. I've been at this for 30-some years now, talking about reforming economic development programs. I believe this is a very broken system that provides billions in funds to wealthy corporations that could better be used for things like transportation, affordable housing, childcare, higher ed, all of which have a higher return on investment than all of these programs combined. And I do want to especially thank Senators Krueger, Schoofus, Ryan, in particular, for much of the work that you've been doing, championing reform measures around these programs. But let me just start with the PFM report. I would say, on the whole, I think PFM did a great job evaluating these programs. It is a gargantuan task to do this. We should be doing it on a very regular basis, and it should be done with great care and to make sure that these are independent studies. One of the things that the report does not really answer, and it's one of the most fundamental questions that it was required to evaluate, was whether a similar job creation or private investment would have occurred without the existence of state incentives. That is the but-for test that we all know about. It said it really kind of skirts around this issue and really kind of discounts what I think is a massive amount of literature and academic studies that have been done on this topic. Independent academic studies, not funded by industry groups or anything of that nature. So we know that Professor Tim Bartik of the Upjohn Institute would say that for at least 75% of firms receiving subsidies, the firm would have made a similar decision to locate, expand, or remain in place without an incentive. And the academic research that's been done really bears that out. I would also say that the last evaluation that was done of New York's tax incentives was done by noted economists Don Boyd and Marilyn Rubens in 2013, and that was done for Governor Andrew Cuomo's Property Tax Reform Commission. And they basically said there's no conclusive evidence from research studies conducted since the mid-1950s to show that business tax incentives have an impact on net economic gains to the state above and beyond the level that would have been attained absent these incentives. So I would say that it defies common sense for the state or consultants to assume that every job at a company getting subsidies is the result of those subsidies. I mean, let's just take a look at Amazon, for instance, right? I mean, do we think that Amazon, I mean, they, they have the audacity, quite frankly, to check the but-for box, which is the wealthiest company in the world. Jeff Bezos does not need our money. And if you look at deals that have been done, like the Niagara County IDA, they gave Amazon $94 million in property tax breaks, $26 million in sales tax breaks, $3.5 million in mortgage recording tax breaks. And who's making that up? Well, it's the small businesses that Ashley was talking about. It's our taxpayers, it's our schools that suffer as a result of these abatements. Because let's remember, when IDAs abate school taxes, schools are the losers, and property taxpayers are also the losers. The report also notes that business incentives should be viewed as a process and not an event. And they, toward that end, they have two, numerous recommendations. One is better transparency and greater accountability. Shocking, I know, right? This is something that we've been fighting for, for a long time. They also note that the Pew Charitable Trust has written about state efforts to develop regular tax incentive evaluation processes. They've ranked these processes either with leading, making progress, or trailing. Guess where New York ranked in that, right? We are trailing. And we have a lot of work to do. And I would just finish by saying, I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about, we need to stop IDAs from giving away our school tax dollars. Senator Ryan has a bill that would, in fact, do this. There's also a bill sitting before the governor that would put school board members and/or union members on IDA boards. Schools don't have a say in the money that's being given away that they should be getting by these IDAs. We're also going to be putting out Reinvent Albany and Good Jobs First, a report later next month that details how pilot payments that are not included in the tax-based growth factor of the property tax cap are, in fact, creating negative property tax caps and are harming our schools even more than we thought. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Michael Kink.
Thank you. There we go. No? Thank you to the chairs, to the senators, to the members of the committee, and thanks for working so hard for commissioning this report. It's, as Ron said, the first serious study of these programs since 2013. And I think any methodology is a little bit up for grabs, but it's more serious, more thorough, and more thoughtful than I think anything that has been presented to the public by the government in about a decade. I want to read the results into the record, just so it's clear, right? 21 out of 25 programs showed no net benefits to the state, right? No benefits to workers, no benefits to families, no benefits to businesses. Eight out of 10 of our programs are failing, right? Four of them showed some positive report, returns, a buck, a buck and a quarter. Excelsior is the only one that showed any kind of significant return, four and a quarter. And none of these programs match the returns for early childhood education investments, childcare, right? Around the mid and late 90s, when these programs were ramping up under the Pataki administration, in Minnesota, the Federal Reserve Bank of Minnesota started a body of work documenting the success of investments in early childhood programs. They put out reports starting in 1998 that showed $16 return for every dollar investment. They said very explicitly, investments in early childhood learning should be classified as economic development because of the benefits to the state, to the workforce, to the economy, right? The first thing Hope Knight said when you questioned her closely, what do businesses need? They need a trained workforce, right? And that starts young. And those investments provide positive returns. This kind of failure is happening in the context of, honestly, decades of failure, under both Republican and Democratic governors, under both Republican and Democratic legislative majorities. This is a program that's failing, and it's in the context of economic failures. The deindustrialization of upstate New York didn't just happen, it's not like the weather. Wall Street executives and corporate CEOs were driving down wages. They wanted to get rid of good, middle-class wages across upstate and on Long Island. Our infrastructure was destroyed by capitalism. If the state is going to do something to fight back, broad-based investments in the kind of public goods and services that benefit all businesses, Ashley's businesses, Amazon, everybody else. If you've got kids that can learn in school and go through early childhood, K to 12, higher education, if you've got beautiful public parks, libraries, those are the kinds of things that attract large, small, medium-sized businesses. Those are the kinds of-- Those are the kinds of investments that the public can see. If you're picking winners and losers, I don't have to reinforce it. Everybody else pays higher taxes because these guys get tax cuts, right? People struggle over the utility bills all over this state, and Amazon is being offered free green energy for their AI centers. It's ridiculous, and I think it's part of the broad anger and dissatisfaction with the government. So I'm heartened to see members from both parties, folks from the left, right, and center criticizing these programs. We don't need more boondoggles. We don't need more scandals. We don't need more corruption. What we need are good, strong investments in public programs that benefit all New Yorkers, and that's something the legislature can accomplish. Our recommendation is to take the $11 billion that we spend in state and local programs. IDAs exist because you guys authorized them. You can unauthorize them, right? These are all creatures of state law. If you take 20% of those every year over five years and move $11 billion out of subsidies to profitable corporations and into the kinds of public investments that people can see and feel in their communities, we'll get more in return, and I think the people of New York will be more satisfied with their government. Small businesses will grow. Benefits will come to all communities across the state. That's the smart way to do things. We should not repeat the failures of the past. We've got a couple decades of failure, and I think folks are angry enough that it's worth going in a different direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Citizens Budget Commission.
Thank you. Thank you to all the chairs and the senators for hosting this hearing today and for sponsoring the legislation that created the study that we're actually here to discuss. Our full testimony reviews the study's findings and offers some recommendations about how to build on PFM's work to improve the cost effectiveness in New York State's economic development programs. I'll get into some of that here, and hopefully, if I have time, I'll also discuss the film tax credit a little bit in a little bit more detail. As Michael said, our research showed that New York State spends about $11 billion a year between state and local governments and economic development. Tax breaks represent about 2/3 of that spending. But amazingly, until now, we hadn't asked the simple question of whether taxpayers were getting any return on that investment, and we really had been flying blind on economic development policy for years. The findings of PFM's report are stunning, but not necessarily surprising. Most economic development incentives do not pay for themselves, and in particular, the ones that stood out as not paying for themselves are those that are really targeted at specific sectors, not just film and TV, but also life sciences, alcoholic beverage production, and a number of others that showed up on the negative side of the ledger. On the positive side, it did show that some evidence that small number of performance-based incentives like Excelsior do actually pay for themselves, but as Ron said, too, we still need to follow up on this funding to confirm that they're actually effective and that the inducement effect, the hypothetical but-for that PFM found, actually bears out when you look at firm-level data. These findings really should be a wake-up call, and New York should keep what works and amend, narrow, or eliminate the programs that are found to be ineffective, and ensure that the tax credit programs that we do keep are designed in ways that reward actual performance rather than activity that probably would have happened anyway. And we should continue to evaluate those incentives on a regular basis. But as, you know, we've talked a lot about today, it's more important that the state really focus on making New York a more attractive place to do business for all businesses, not just a select few. The vast majority of New York businesses have never received a tax break and will never receive a tax break, and their success really depends on getting the basics right, you know, having high-quality public services and infrastructure, having reasonable taxes, sustainable spending that are competitive with other areas, and also an issue that hasn't come up yet is addressing the housing affordability crisis. To be fair, you know, the tax revenue generated by a tax break, or even sort of tax revenue generated off of job creation, isn't the only way to judge the value of a benefit or a tax credit. But absent for paying for itself, a tax break really should only be renewed if there's clear evidence that a program is the most effective way to deliver a quantifiable public benefit or deliver value in some other way, really based on clear qualitative research, because too often, New York has continued or expanded incentives without proof that they work, and, you know, oftentimes, in a lot of cases, both at the state and the state level, despite evidence that they're ineffective. Our full testimony goes into some more guidelines on how the state can build on the PFM report to improve the effectiveness of these programs. For that, I was going to highlight quickly, as I said before, it's important to study what works and what doesn't, and modify everything accordingly. It's important to ensure that whoever's doing these independent evaluations, that that evaluator has the tax data it needs to actually evaluate programs effectively. There's some legislation for New York City, but nothing on the state level. Continue to avoid picking winners and losers, and also to build on the seeming success of Excelsior and use performance-based incentives to make sure we're only awarding activity that actually has happened. But I think it's also important to note that limiting the use of economic development incentives is easier said than done. Even in the PFM report, they acknowledge that it's difficult for any single state to unilaterally exit what's become a race to the bottom to attract and retain businesses. But I think at the very least, lawmakers can start by reining in the least effective tax breaks and better targeting the incentives that remain. And quickly, I just want to talk about how the film tax credit is a prime example of the challenge of actually doing this. As, you know, Senator Scoofus mentioned before, in the wake of New York upping its tax credit, you know, New Jersey and California had already responded. New York's increases are already in response to New Jersey. Those expansions resulted in significant amounts of forgone revenue and questionable returns. PFM categorized it as really a best, at best, it's been a defense mechanism to defend New York's industry against competition from other states, and that's proven costly. You know, since 2007, the first year that we have records, New York State has spent over $5.8 billion on the film tax credit programs. But it's, we get into employment more, but its share of film production employment nationally has increased by less than 1 percentage point from where it was before the film tax credit went into effect in 2004. Ideally, going forward, you know, we think that New York should retool its film tax credit programs to surgically target the incentives for portions of the industry that are truly at risk while shrinking the amount that's being spent without impact, really for laser targeting on those sectors that actually, portions of the industry that need support. Thank you.
Thank you. Should I go to you first? Because I keep going to him.
I think Senator Scoofus.
Oh, you want Senator Scoofus to open us up, yes.
Not at my request, let the record reflect. So, thank you all for your testimony, being here, the work that you do. An answer that I found interesting from the ESD Commissioner was, she did not agree, or would not, I guess, acknowledge, that return on investment was the paramount consideration when it came to whether to award incentives. I wonder what your reaction to that is and if you believe that it should be the paramount consideration.
I mean, it should be a consideration. I think for a lot of incentives, and, you know, the PFM report goes into some of the details of this, there are some qualitative benefits that aren't captured in there. For the brownfields credit, for example, you know, it's also, you know, helping to remediate land that's been contaminated and return it to productive use and put it back onto the tax rolls. You know, there may also be benefits of, you know, trying to increase or boost employment in one geographic area over another for equity reasons, or to, you know, to build off of other investments that the state is making in, you know, transportation or other infrastructure. But it has to be really clear that absent a return on investment, that rationale is very clearly articulated and understood and quantified, and there's a real public benefit coming out of that. And I think in the absence, you know, a lot of times, that is left out of the debate. But at the same time, you still have to value it and figure out, like, this program is not returning, it doesn't have a positive ROI. The job creation isn't returning more in tax revenue than we're giving up, but that's okay because it's doing X, Y, and Z. Without that information, you can't even make that statement.
I guess I would add to that, that I think the return on investment is a critical part of all of these programs and making sure that the public is getting a return on its investment when they are subsidizing businesses. But I think, you know, the reality is, you know, we're doling these incentives out like candy, and businesses are taking advantage of them because they are there. When you look at survey after survey of what businesses are looking for when they want to locate in an area, again, they're looking at skill level of the workforce. They're looking at the infrastructure. Can I get my goods and services to market? So, you know, looking at, do my employees, are they going to be able to have access to childcare? These are all important things when businesses choose to locate, yet we discount those things here in New York in favor of this kind of economic largesse that we heap upon many businesses.
Why do you think ESD's reports, evaluations that they commission, all happen to all come back as positive returns on investment?
Well, you know, the cynical perspective here is, she's under oath, and, you know, a lot of what's happening here is politicians paying for press conferences. You get a ribbon cutting. You get a few headlines for a few days. I don't think that really addresses the real needs of New Yorkers or the real needs of the economy, but for an executive, it may, you know, get you through the day. The legislature, I think, has a stronger, deeper role in fairly, in, you know, honestly appropriating public resources. If you want to get a good return for the people of New York, then you need to look at it closely, whether or not this agency that administers it does.
Anyone else on that question? Did you find, as I did, the Excelsior jobs tax credit ROI in the report surprising? It was the most meaningful positive ROI in the entire report.
I mean, historically, it was honestly seemed to be the first time that we ever had actual job creation requirements, you know? We ran a bunch of programs for years that just gave away money no matter what happened. And so, to actually have standards and benchmarks for the distribution of resources, shocking. They have to meet the standards and benchmarks or they won't get the resources. I mean, I think it argues that any other program that's still out there that doesn't have job creation requirements should just be flat-out eliminated.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just because I've been around forever, that was a Senate Democratic design program. Just saying, just saying. Senator Ryan.
Thank you. You know, each of you, for your testimonies and perspective, I wanted to, just to open up a little bit, to talk about what else could we be doing as opposed to giving subsidies, you know, to companies? You talked a little about early childhood, but, you know, I think of SUNY investment. What's your thoughts on, we have a lot of money, we're spending on here, we all agree we want to grow the economy? What are our other avenues to do it?
Go ahead.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna say, I think my testimony, my written testimony covers a lot of this, where I think we really need to redefine what we think of as economic development. The current paradigm, I don't believe, is working for anyone except a select handful of businesses that get this economic largesse, so, you know, I think we need to figure out a new way to, you know, attract business to New York State, to keep businesses in New York State, and I think that has to do more with investments. I mean, think about this, if you want to think about economic development, when we invest in things like the MTA and transportation, when we build new subway cars, new buses for New York City, those are built in upstate New York, and that is an incredible economic development tool for upstate New York and for job creation. So I think we really need to take a step back, and I think this report has done a good job of helping us to think about different ways that we can approach this, but these programs need to be continuously evaluated.
I would argue for public goods and public services that benefit all businesses. Early childhood, K-12, higher education, clean water. We have incredible strengths in hydropower and clean energy. We should build on those things. The state has honestly pretty much the best publicly financed healthcare programs in the nation. If we had the guts to do a single pair healthcare program, the only one in the country to do it that could allow businesses to offload their healthcare expenses and be assured of a well-educated workforce with a lot of good employees, that could be a game changer. Those are big-picture things we could do. The other note I'll say is, you know, climate change is real, and upstate New York is among the best places in the country ready to respond to the changing climate. If we made good, solid investments in public infrastructure in upstate New York, we could attract some of the businesses that are going to be fleeing from those low-cost states in the South that are tortured by floods and, you know, multiple 100-degree days all throughout the year.
Let's say New Yorkers for fiscal.
I'll separate sort of two buckets. One is sort of within the toolbox of economic development. You know, tax credits are just one piece of that. It's also, you know, direct spending, and it's also, you know, things like workforce. They all have different costs, they all have different returns, and sort of putting them on the playing field and figuring out what's most cost-effective to actually achieve that goal, I think there's a lot of evidence from, you know, Tim Bartik especially, on the value of workforce development incentives as well. And you sort of having us, you can sort of put them on the same playing field to compare what's cost-effective, is it incentives, is it spending, is it workforce, is it education, whatever it is. The other piece is sort of the broader business climate, and it's not, you know, it's not just sort of, you know, levels of taxation, levels of regulation. Is it easy to build? Is it easy to hire? Is it easy to expand? You know, we get into a number of those, and our testimony actually has hit on a lot of, a lot of those issues, too. It has to be, you know, New York has to be an attractive and competitive place to do business, and, you know, those types of policies, which aren't necessarily direct spending, also have a big impact on, you know, the ability to, you know, attract and retain businesses and attracting workforce.
Excellent. Now, just to come back to you, you mentioned there's a great bill out there about prohibiting IDAs from giving away school taxes.
Did you hear about that one?
What's wrong? What's wrong with it?
There's so many things wrong with it. I just think it's, first of all, it's a really horrible idea to provide tax breaks on the back of our schools and the backs of our property taxpayers. So what IDAs do, they give abatements up to, you know, 10, 20, 30 years for property taxes, in particular, you know, and in New York, 60% of our property taxes are, in fact, paid to our schools, right? So this is money that schools will not be getting. This is money that other taxpayers and other small businesses are going to have to make up through the property tax process. So there's that. There's also the fact that, as Senator, I believe, Kruger brought up, was the fact that these IDAs, their whole existence is based on the fees that they get from the deals that they make, right? They pay their salaries, their budgets are construed of those dollars, so they are incentivized to make more and bigger deals in order to get more money. Then couple that with the fact that their legal counsels also get millions and millions of dollars from these deals as well. So, you know, there's a whole cottage industry around IDAs right now that does nothing to benefit the people of the state of New York or the communities in which they serve. Are there good IDA deals sometimes? You know, sure, I'll concede that, sometimes the deals work, but by and large, I think, you know, these IDA deals are bad for communities, bad for taxpayers, and we need to figure out another way to approach this.
I have to cut you off. Thank you. Senator Comrie.
Thank you all, gentlemen, for being here, and I appreciate your testimony and your insight. How did IDAs start? Can you enlighten me, anybody?
I believe historically, they started in the 60s, and they were, you know, designed, obviously, to try and help build communities, build jobs in communities, but I think, you know, over the decades, we've certainly gotten far away from potential original mission, and, you know, unfortunately, you know, we're not monitoring these IDAs as well as we should. There was just a policy provision inserted into the last budget, thanks to Senator Kruger, that would create a local database of deals, similar to which you've worked on in the past. At the state level, we need that to work. We need to understand where all of these dollars are going, what the impact is, how many jobs are being created, what the cost per job is, to determine if these are effective at all. So we need to do a better job of tracking the programs, but by and large, this is just simply the wrong way to do economic development.
And who do you think would be most effective in making that analysis?
Making what?
Making that analysis to track that and see the effectiveness of these IDAs.
I think, you know, looking at all the metrics that the IDAs use, having a robust authorities budget office, which is supposed to, you know, monitor and evaluate IDAs, they've been woefully underfunded and understaffed over the years and lack the teeth to really, you know, put pressure on IDAs to change the way they're doing business and to, in fact, penalize IDAs that are and to in fact penalize IDAs that are not operating in good faith.
I was hoping you would say that the authorities office needed to be more robust. That's something that I put in a couple of bills on last year and I hope to focus on it again. My time is short, I just want to thank you, gentlemen. I hope that you can continue to raise your voices on this subject so that we can push the legislature to make that happen and the governor's office to make things happen. We need transparency. And I definitely agree with the issue of communities losing their school funding with these IDA payouts. So I guess as I'm getting more gray hair, I'm getting more conservative. But reality is reality, that we have to focus on making sure that we are preserving our dollars for what we need. And the idea of creating more physical infrastructure to make neighborhoods more livable and improve the quality of life is something that's important to all of us in this state. And I agree with you, you know, with climate change, New York is becoming more and more viable as a state to be in. And I had the honor of going upstate to the Adirondack Foundation, and they've talked about just that issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Kevin Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you to all of you for coming up here to testify. I think we can all agree that ESD can do better with these tax incentive programs. And I'm not sure if the three of you were here when I asked her about, you know, what they do to oversee the program. She responded by saying, you know, after two years, they do a study to see whether it worked or not. Obviously, that is not how we should be running these programs. What would you say we can do better? What would you recommend that ESD do instead of waiting two years? To see if, you know, the actual program is bringing in a positive ROI?
I mean, I think one thing we could do is have a requirement that every tax exam, I mean, it's not just for economic development, but it could be for housing as well, that tax incentives are regularly evaluated independently on a regular basis before they're set to expire.
So that the legislature. Regular basis, like how would you define that? Like every quarter, every year?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, not every year certainly, but sort of, you know, periodically before it expires. It could be, it could be on a rolling basis, because I think one thing PFM pointed out, it's hard to do. And you need a lot of data to do it well and to take a deep dive into it. So it could, you know, it could be on a roll and maybe every, you know, four or five years. But key tied to before the renewal. So the legislature has the information to evaluate a program and decide whether to keep it, change it, end it, before they come up to a vote. And that's sort of, I think that's the key point, so that you have the information necessary to act on it, one way or another. And now that's sort of, you know, we've seen this a couple of times where the legislature renew it. And then, like the film tax credit, for example, a year later, PFM comes out and says, this may not be effective. Would've been nice to know that in advance of renewing or expanding the program.
It's hard for me to be calm and measured about ESDC. I mean, you had a CEO sit here and testify under oath that she didn't know the budget of her own agency. You know, people on public assistance are harassed aggressively to redocument their eligibility for services every single month. And you've got huge profitable corporations and an agency with 1,000 employees that can't track things for, you know, every couple of years, they ask a few questions. I think it's really outrageous. And I think we should demand accountability from any corporation that it's getting public resources of this magnitude. They have enough staff that they could be, you know, they could be guarding them closely like they were under the basket, you know? I don't understand the hands-off attitude when there's such a documented failure to deliver what the public is paying for.
Yeah, and doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. I think we know how that's defined, right?
Sounds like you guys would be in favor of Elon Musk's dodge.
Not in favor of a lot of Elon Musk, but.
I think the government should do things.
Too soon.
He's already gotten nearly a billion dollars from the state of New York, right? So.
He could cut himself.
Yeah.
Okay, I might be last. Anyone else? Sorry, Senator Murk, no? Okay, so I'm last. So I talked about earlier that I do have a bill that would require a timeline on how long any tax expenditure or credit existed and then would have to be evaluated. Also, I think my bill is on a rolling basis. So I, it sounds like you would agree with me on that. Would you agree with me on those, on that bill?
Yeah.
Okay, next question. Do any of you think it would be a good idea to continue to give tax exemptions or grants to private sports stadiums or casinos?
I would not be in favor of that. I think the research bears that out, that it's a bad deal.
Absolutely not.
CBC?
Well, we haven't taken official position on every deal unilaterally, but most of them have not shown a return on investment and said no.
Okay, I'm gonna leave it there. Thank you all very much for your testimony. I know we made everybody sort of go through their own testimony quickly, but there's a lot of good meat in each of your proposals. So thank you very much. Looking forward to continuing to work with you. And I'm gonna call up the next.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next panel, Reinvent Albany, John Keeney. And yet, you're not John Keeney. Hello?
Remote.
Oh, remote, excuse me. Ooh, the screen popped up, okay. All right. So someone's gonna hand us testimony and then we will start with you, John. Thank you.
Right.
See what technology does for us all? Okay, thank you. Senator Scuvas, would you like to swear in our guest?
I would be happy to.
Hi, good afternoon. Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we've actually given, you're a one-person panel, so you have 10 minutes to go through your testimony.
Thank you so much, and I am the real John Keeney. Thank you, senators, for having me and allowing me to testify remotely. I really appreciate it. Because of a personal issue, wasn't able to join you all today, which I'd hoped to do. We really appreciate that the senators on this panel, many of whom we've worked with, have spent a lot of time trying to make economic development spending more transparent and accountable and to reform it. And we also appreciate you commissioning the thoroughly researched and high-quality PGM report, which we think is a big step forward for how the legislature does things. And we hope becomes a new model. Reinvent Albany, my group works for Transparent, Accountable New York Government. And we've been testifying on corporate subsidies and economic development boondoggles for over a decade. So this is familiar territory. And, you know, we strongly support taxpayer investment in public infrastructure, education, training that spurs jobs and economic growth. Our group was not founded to fight corporate subsidies. But the billions that New York State and local taxpayers are shoveling into subsidies for big businesses have been so utterly and repeatedly debunked by independent analysts broadly, that to us, it's just obvious that these subsidies are wasteful, economically and fiscally irrational, purely political, and in some cases even based on pay-to-play, not public interest. And to that end, we note that the last director of the authorities budget office was just fired earlier this year for being too publicly critical of IDAs while working with one of the senators on this panel. And this entire panel and this topic is really within the context of tremendously powerful special interest groups that are just getting enormous, enormous amounts of tax dollars because of their political influence. A couple of notes from previous speakers. Unfortunately, we believe that ESD is functionally part of the governor's office and thus politicized and, in our view, completely lacks the capacity to objectively evaluate the subsidies they administer. The consultants that ESD prefers to hire are typically captive to the subsidized industries being scrutinized and are often viewed as biased and untrustworthy by independent experts. My organization and myself personally have reviewed hundreds of reports done by academic and think tank analysts from across the political spectrum on the topic of economic development subsidies, corporate subsidies. And it's pretty apparent who is an independent expert and who is paid by industry when you review those. I'd note that our groups have been pleading for an independent budget office for New York State for many decades. And that's, the reason for that is they can do the kind of objective analysis of economic development subsidies that many of you, you senators, have been asking for today. And it's something that New York City has and has been invaluable when reviewing large economic development subsidies, including that proposed for the area around Penn Station. So I know it's a long shot, but that's why an independent budget office really matters. So a couple of quick things. Responding to the film industry, the film sound stages in New York have been heavily subsidized by state and local governments, including via opportunity zones, property tax abatements, and direct grants. So the infrastructure that the film industry was talking about here as being so important is actually also heavily subsidized. And that's something that the PFM report didn't look at at all. So the film industry itself is both heavily subsidized through a reimbursable tax credit program and through subsidies for individual sound stages, which by the way, are massively overbuilt in New York. And probably a big reason why the film industry needs so many subsidies, because they need to fill the sound stages that were overbuilt because of other subsidies. So it's not just a race to the bottom with other states. It's also a, how do we fill the over-expanded soundstage capacity that we built in part with subsidies problem? Next, the PFM report is not an outlier. It's completely consistent with a massive amount of evidence and studies conducted by experts who are not being paid by the subsidized industries. And I appreciate that the senators were very persistent in emphasizing that distinction between consultants paid for by subsidized industry and those not, because the results of their analyses are dramatically different. And people who do not have a pocketbook interest in these subsidies consistently and overwhelmingly find the subsidies to be uneconomical, inefficient, wasteful, whatever words you choose to use. And in fact, the industry and ESD commission reports are the outliers when you look at the totality of all the research on these topics. So here, it really is upside-down world on planet Albany when it comes to reports like this and the information that you all are presented. On the PFM report, despite the fact that it clearly touched a nerve with the film industry and others, in fact, the PFM report, if it has a flaw, is that it actually dramatically understates how inefficient and wasteful the various reimbursable tax credit programs, including film TV, are. Because PFM, in their report, assumes that all jobs are due to the subsidy that they receive, which is not supported by any research whatsoever. In fact, the best research suggests that for jobs that are not film TV, at most, it's one in four jobs are located due to subsidies. But it's much more probable that it's less than half of that, so somewhere between 2% and 10%. So something to consider there. And other research on film TV finds that, you know, roughly half of film TV jobs are due to subsidy decisions. So by assuming that all these jobs are due to the subsidy, PFM actually presents a best case for the industry. And that shows you really how bad and inefficient these programs are, because the report is scathing. Note from, on the small business representative who was great, we completely agree that New York State policies and spending are totally skewed, massively favor big corporate and big-money investors over small businesses. Could spend hours talking about this topic and think it's important that their rep brought that before you. We also agree that it's really damaging to small employers that New York raised UI employment rates instead of doing what every other state did, which is to pay off the federal COVID UI with federal COVID aid, getting a little afar from what we're talking about. But still, that's billions of dollars in additional taxes on small employers. There's many, many things that the legislature can do if you want to promote small businesses and do it in a way that's, you know, politically and popularly directed, connected to that, including things like investing in aid to localities and their IT systems, which are usually pretty wretched. And that modernized IT with an emphasis on business processes could really help with permitting and records and things like that, that are costly for many, many small businesses. So you make that much more seamless and you just take a big, a big pain out of starting small businesses and doing the paperwork. Stadia, convention centers, casinos, arenas have been studied extensively. And they are a total waste of money. And we could do a whole hearing on that. And I'm happy to bring in huge amounts of evidence, but they are not a good investment of taxpayer dollars. And to that end, these subsidies are not free money, which just has to be said again and again, that you spend a dollar on a subsidy for a job that is only a job and creates no public benefit, you're not getting much for it, because you can create a job that does provide a public benefit. For instance, a construction job, you know, building a new bridge, improving a road, improving a subway system, you know, getting lead out of the water, et cetera, et cetera. And you get the benefit both of the job and of the public benefit. For any direct subsidy that you're giving to a business, it means that you are only getting the job part, you're not getting the broader public benefit. Because the multiplier, which is what PFM studied, is not better for a film job or a public job. Four things we're asking you to do quickly. One, get PFM or another firm to answer the but-for test. That is, would this job exist or without this incentive? This is really, really important. And the, it's not impossible, there's a ton of research on it. Tim Bartik, who has testified before the Senate previously, is considered the national expert on this at the Upjohn Institute. He has done huge amounts of work and collated enormous amounts of work by others on this topic. It's totally doable to get a reasonable estimate of the but-for estimate. And I would strongly encourage you to do that as the follow-on to this. We can talk about that further. Next, stop treating this as magic money, free money.
Wait, oops. I'm sorry, John, so your bell went off, so I'm gonna cut you off.
It didn't.
So we, oh yeah, I didn't think you heard it, because you're in New York City.
I didn't hear it, I didn't, I didn't get my.
Didn't go that far. Okay, so we're gonna shift to the asking you questions part. Thank you very much for your detailed testimony. Senator Sean Ryan.
Thanks, thanks for your testimony today. I just had a question about the but-for test. You know, local IDAs around the state are always wrestling with this, because when companies come in often, you know, for either an expansion, they often check the box on job retention. And I think it's an awful position for them to be in. So it's not just like we need an expert to come look and backwards to look at what we did, but how do you propose looking at this, you know, going forward? Like if you were on the, you know, County X IDA and a company comes in and says, yeah, we need this, or we're gonna let 50 people go. Like, how do you get to the bottom of that?
I think a good place to start is to have some kind of guidance from the state on but-for and how it applies to different sectors of the business and employment. So we know that film TV, because it's mobile, for instance, has different characteristics than a grocery store or a, you know, a factory, a manufacturing center. They all are different to some degree and they have different but-for. But these things are known. And so being able to analyze them and give more information to IDAs, for instance, that have to make the decision, would make it more helpful to know that a range of, a range of jobs from this kind of industry are influenced by subsidy. So as I mentioned earlier, the best estimate is probably subsidies affect one in four at most. It's really 2 to 30%, or 2 to 25% of jobs and business locations. Generically, that's across all business sectors. So that's why doing the follow-on test, or report, is so important, because it really helps illuminate how much. helps illuminate how much subsidies influence business siting locations and job creation for different industries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You you mentioned four things here that you are asking us to do. Of the four, which you, what do you think is the most possible to get done? Is it the reimbursable tax credits or the changing the tax code and decoupling it from the federal opportunity tax home breaks?
Well, well, look, the, if I may, very quickly, the, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, do get, get the but for test. Get the reimbursable tax credits on budget instead of having them as magic money that is totally off budget and not in the financial plans, which we think is a big, big problem and perhaps unconstitutional because they are expenditures functionally, but you don't, we pretend they're not. Decoupling from Oz, that's a generous bill the Senate passed. Previously, we hope you pass it again and even expand it because the Trump administration or incoming administration is talking about expanding it, and there's no reason New York taxpayers should be stuck with that. And then there's Senator Ryan's bill, S 89, which we think that the Senate should pass, and he probably does too. So that we hope is realistic. So the, you know.
I didn't include that one. I had assumed that was going to pass, so.
Yeah.
The, and and I would like that to pass, so I'm just curious. Do you agree with eliminating IDAs or do you see it that still there's a need for them with any amendments or changes?
I think IDAs are completely out of control and are wasting more money than ESD. And at this point.
Is there a model you would like? I'm sorry, I'm short on time. I don't mean it for sure.
I, you know, it's, it's a political question as to the appetite and ability to to curb them in, but but, you know, we would support vastly reducing and capping their amount that they can abate and having a more standardized governance model.
Okay, thank you. And just in considering some of these incentives, other than ROIs, what would you think would be a compelling reason to continue a tax incentive? Eliminating the ROI factor?
You know, frankly, we would rather see direct government grants that are on budget, so at least they're in the, you know, budget debate than using the tax code for subsidies, which we think creates the illusion that the money is free.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just double check. Okay, well, thank you very much for your testimony, John. So I think if you were listening earlier, you're hearing almost a struggle for some of us that we don't think we're doing enough for small businesses and that the programs we have don't really offer anything that they can use, and yet we're very concerned about how much tax money is going out the door for very large mega type deals and unjustified deals. Do you have any specific proposals on how you think we can improve our modeling to assist the smaller and medium sized businesses, which actually are job creators in our state?
I mean, that, I like the idea of doing a hearing and going through specifics with small business owners so that you can categorize it and also reducing and capping the size of the subsidies that go to the bigger businesses and being very explicit about the size, the segment of employers that are getting the subsidies, which is something that ESD does not do. And having a state economic development plan that the legislature helps develop with ESD that talks about targeting employers of different sizes, that making it explicit as a goal, that would be really helpful because right now, if you look at the totality of incentives, that you're going to, you're going to find that they help the bigger employers disproportionately. And so, but let's put a number on that. And I think that would be a great thing to analyze and have another independent study of and then come up with some policy goals. So, you know, let's have a equal playing field and subsidy per number of employers, per size of employer. So the bodega on the corner gets the same subsidy per job as Amazon.
And I had asked this question earlier, I think of Hope Night. Do you think we should have a cap on the investment per employee or even a cap on any given company in what they can get in total tax expenditure and credits from the state?
Definitely. And I don't know what the magic number is, but it's probably a lot less than $75,000 per full time job equivalent. And, you know, more somewhere around, you know, under 10,000. Because if you look at average subsidies for businesses, they are much, much smaller generally than some of these marquee programs and projects, which tend to be just gigantic.
Do you know if New York's out of the range of norm for other states that also have these programs?
Yes, New York is, has among the highest subsidy per employment of any state in the United States in the aggregate. New York is, is, you know, when you look at the totality of subsidies provided through all the different tax programs and all of the direct spending on stadiums and arenas and whatnot, New York is in the, you know, very close to the top, if not the top, in most national rankings. We are subsidy, subsidy leaders here and, and, you know, do, we, we put a lot of money out to big employers.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time and your testimony today, and we saved you the trip to Albany, even better. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, our next panelist and our actual last panel is PFM Group Consulting, Randall Bauer, Director and Project Manager of the PFM Impact Study that we've all been Thank you. And Senator Scoofus is going to swear you in.
Once you're comfortable there, good afternoon, Mr. Bauer. If you could raise your right hands, do you solemnly swear that you'll tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Welcome.
So there's obviously been a lot of conversation already. It's been interesting to hear my own report critiqued and.
You were last by design.
Well, I appreciate that. So I, you have my prepared remarks, and I'm not going to go through them. A lot of them is a distillation of key points from the 300 and some odd page study, which I'm surprised so many people have read. So thank you for that, and thank you to the committee chairs for the opportunity to present, and thanks to each of the senators for your interest in this subject. What I'm going to do is just do a brief introduction, then I'm going to go to our recommendations next because I want to make sure I get them into the record and discuss them. And then some of the salient points related to topics that have been discussed amongst the other panelists. So as a start, as mentioned, I am a director, Randall Bauer, at PFM Group Consulting. I led the project team that conducted the 2023 study. Under my direction, PFM has conducted well over 100 incentive evaluations and or advised on business incentives for 10 states. PFM is a non ideological firm. We've done studies in this area in blue states like Hawaii, New Mexico, and New York, red states like Indiana and Oklahoma, and purple states like Nevada and Wisconsin. The project team included two PhD economists, Dr. Jerry Patis of Fourth Economy, who led the economic impact analysis, and Dr. Ellen Harpold of Smart Incentives, who is a subject matter expert on incentive design, and led the analysis of workforce related incentives. So I'm now going to go just to the, our recommendations, and some of which have been touched on in other, by other speakers, and I appreciate that. So kind of what we view as next steps for the state, if if we were advising you on this process, is that, one, you should develop a regular cycle or schedule for evaluation of tax incentives because, you know, once every 13 years, it doesn't provide sufficient oversight or opportunity to engage in continuous quality improvement. The states that are seen as leaders in this area do engage in those types of regular activities, and having been a part of that in the state of Oklahoma for nine years, they have acted continuously on some of our recommendations, not all of them, of course, but it has led to improvement in those programs. And those are, those changes have been made both by the legislature and by the administering agencies. So there has been a good buy in in terms of the work that we've done. It's often noted in performance measurement world that what gets measured gets managed. Incentive evaluations are a form of measurement, and I'm confident it would improve the overall management oversight for the state if you get on a regular cycle. The most of the states that are on a regular cycle are on a four to six year cycle, and you identify what are the incentives that you're going to want to evaluate. In the case of Oklahoma, they have an independent commission. They have the ability to not evaluate any incentive that has less than $1 million of financial impact on the state in any particular year. That allows them then to focus on, you know, the ones that have the most effect on, on the state and on its budget. So there are a variety of effective models for this process. The Joint Legislative and Audit Review Committees in both Virginia and Washington are recognized as very strong evaluation operations. They are legislative driven audits. There are other states where the function resides in the executive branch, although I personally believe it important that it be separate and distinct from the administering agencies of the incentives. That is, you know, for conflict of interest reasons. And finally, Oklahoma and a few other states have used a private evaluation model, which also removes issues related to conflict of interest, and that's the work that we have been doing for nine years since the start of Oklahoma's process in 2016. The second is that the state should also evaluate non tax business incentives. These may be appropriation backed programs that support research and development, other business related activities, grant programs, low interest or forgivable loan programs, and other types of support. I think the discussion around the IDAs is very interesting. That's not a model that is, that exists in several of the states where we've done evaluations, but it certainly appears that it, it's important in for the state of New York. As I, so my background is I worked 11 years for the State Senate in Iowa, and I staffed economic development and budget and tax issues, and then I was Budget Director for the state when Tom Vilsek was governor. One of the points that I've always made is that most any incentive that may be provided via a tax incentive can also be provided on the expenditure side of the budget, and you should weigh that for efficacy. As has, was mentioned by a previous speaker, that does tend to lead you, give you better control over the actual expenditure as opposed to a refundable credit or reimbursable credit where, as has been noted, a check goes out and you really have no way of, of making sure that that's, that it's sufficiently, you know, that you have a budget to handle that. So third is that the evaluation process should consider factors other than economic impact. I'll talk a little bit about economic impact in following remarks. So the Oklahoma statute, which was developed in conjunction with subject matter experts from Pew, requires evalu, each evaluation has to include all the following: an estimate of the economic and fiscal impact, assessment of whether adequate financial safeguards are in place, whether the incentive is being administered effectively, whether the incentive is achieving its goals, recommendations on whether the incentive should be retained, reconfigured, or repealed, and recommendations to any changes to state policy, rules, or statutes that would allow the incentive to be more easily or conclusively evaluated in the future. And that's, if any of the discussion in the literature of incentive evaluations, the issue of data always comes up. And the only way that you can really ensure that you have the data is to have a contractual relationship between the beneficiary of the incentive and the state. And that's one of the reasons why I also think some of the as of right tax incentives are not particularly effective because you do not have that ability to enter into that kind of contractual arrangement. So this specific set of evaluations in Oklahoma has proven effective. As I said, over the nine years that we've been engaged, there have been notable changes to state statutes. Some incentives have been eliminated, some have been modified, and administrative processes based on this evaluation process have been changed. The final of the four recommendations is that the legislature should ensure that all tax incentives have an identified purpose and goal and an ability to determine effectiveness. Program purpose and goals are generally in place, but the missing component in many instances is the means to obtain the data and information necessary to determine the effectiveness. And that's a critical component of incentive design and should be something that the legislature is mindful of as they develop statutes around incentives. Now I want to go back and talk about a few of the issues that have, have been raised in, in the discussion. So for economic impact, as has been noted, we use one of the standard economic impact models in plan. I kind of take exception to the suggestion that Remy is a more sophisticated model. It's a different model. It looks at different things. From my experience, it's more useful in transformational types of exercises around tax structures or other changes. For the kinds of meat and potatoes estimates that we're doing on, on this exercise in plan is perfectly fine and is what is used most widely around the country. Qualitative impacts are also important. So there has been a lot of focus on the ROI, only on the quantitative aspect of our analysis. And throughout it, we also bring out the qualitative aspect of, of incentives. And that's more of a judgment call, and you have to weigh it against what are you going to use as determinants as to whether something is qualitatively important. And that is a judgment call. We use a disinterested third party perspective on it, and it comes out in each of the analyses. So I will use a, for instance, the return on investment on the quantitative side for the real, the brownfields program and the historic rehabilitation credit come out to about the same ROI as the entertainment credits. I believe they're more effective because they have positive, positive externalities. You're returning property to commercial use. There are benefits to the surrounding areas that where the, where that remediation or improvements are being done, and those are the kinds of things that don't get built into the quantitative analysis, but you as policymakers should take them into consideration. Also, the ROI calculation is a point in time analysis. You're comparing the wages, payroll, and other benefits in a particular year to the incentive that is granted. But in many instances, as has been noted, if you make a capital investment and you get the incentive for one year, the effect occurs for many years as the factory, for example, is in, is in operation and there may be 100 jobs. You really almost have to do a waterfall effect to determine that. That's a complicated analysis, and it gets into longitudinal analysis. Could not do that when we're doing 25 of these here, but it's certainly a project that would be useful for some of these capital intensive types of investments. Now, I think the, the point was raised about the film industry. I want to make a couple of points. First of all, the concern that the data we used was only two NAX codes was only for analysis of New York's share of production and post production employment. It was not used for any of the impact, economic impact analysis. That data came straight from EDC, and, and we believe it's perfectly, you know, it's, it's, it's the right data. It's the same data that they provided to their consultants, Camoin, when they did their economic impact analysis. This was a point in time analysis in a, not a great time period for this, that particular credit because of COVID. We made some assumptions as to, as a related, we did not make some assumptions of what activity might have occurred without COVID that Camoin did. And so it's a different look at the data. But the fact of the matter is, there are 42 studies that have been done, and they're all in the appendix, that have been done by state governments. And the, and the fact, I guess I could go into, okay, the fact is that nearly all of them come to the same conclusion. The ROI is about the same as we have within our particular study, and I would certainly stand by the fact that everybody else can't be all wrong on this, and only the industry is right.
Well, yeah. For a lot of you.
I have more.
100 page report? No, thank you.
It's all in the written comments.
Thank you. I, I know that Senator Scoofus wants to be first up.
I don't have to be first, but I'm happy to.
That's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bauer. I appreciate not just, certainly you're here, but you're, I think it was a year in the making, all the work that you put into this report. That's the topic of conversation today. Can you first speak to something that came up with the ESD Commissioner, which was that it seems every report, every evaluation that they commission comes back and validates whatever they're doing? And there's a inevitably always a positive ROI. Can you speak to why you think that is? Is that something we, we should be suspicious of, especially in light of the fact that their numbers do not jive with what is in your report?
Well, in defense of ESD, we did find positive ROI in a couple of their programs. Excelsior, as we note, we believe is well designed. We have in the report the 10 kind of economic development incentive best practices that we have developed that are not ours alone. They came from other sources that we've assimilated. And several of those that it's, that is discretionary. ESDA has a significant process for applications and review that they do require results before dollars are allocated, and there's significant reporting too. So those are all good features. And, and we see those in a lot of quality jobs programs around the country, that they tend to be fairly well designed, and it tends to be programs that are not as focused, that don't have as good an ROI. I can't speak to the motivations of ESD as it relates to past studies, but I did work at state government for a long time. You know, they certainly have their masters as well, and, and you're always wanting to present. You know, they certainly have their masters as well, and you're always wanting to present your programs in the best possible light. But again, that's just my experience from state government.
These, similarly, these evaluations from industry stakeholders, we were, you know, I guess there were two or three that were shared by the M P A or referenced by the M P A. In your experience, has there ever been an evaluation commissioned by a stakeholder group that benefits from a tax incentive that does not come back glowingly in their favor?
Well, I will say this. We have conducted an incentive evaluation for a state that did not come back the way they wanted, and they just didn't publish the study. So, I am certainly not going to name the state, but that's certainly also something that can happen. You know, obviously, the industry groups are going to find firms that they think are, you know, have similar kinds of perspectives as they do. Now, the H R and A report, we've worked with H R and A on some past studies. I don't think that's necessarily a bad report. I do think it's something of an outlier, though. But they did use some data that was more proprietary nature related to tourism in the particular state that they were doing that study for, which we would not have had access to.
Got it. Is there, you know, I know when, when one goes out and does polling, there's a margin of error associated with the results that come in, you know, a 95% confidence interval, plus or minus 5% margin of error. Is there anything equivalent here that you would suggest that we keep in mind when looking at your quantitative data here?
Well, I do think there are several things that you have to keep in mind. One is the BUT-4 test is an important issue, and we address it in our report. And we do note that we don't build in a specific number. The five, the 2% to 25% number that was mentioned by the last speaker, that is from Dr. Tim Bartik, and he is a noted expert in this field. And it was a meta-analysis of studies that have been done on the BUT-4 test. So he basically assimilated it all and came up with this range. But there were studies that had significantly higher numbers in terms of what percentage were because of the incentive itself. So it's really hard to just adopt one particular number and apply that across the board. By all means, the tourism industry does have, they're nomadic. They will go where the incentive is. But they also are, as I think Senator Ryan brought out the point, you just have to keep feeding them every year. The only part of the industry that you don't have to keep feeding is post-production. And quite frankly, that you have a lot of post-production, that's better than a lot of states, because they don't, they can only do the production side of it, and they keep feeding it year after year.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report and your testimony. It's really super, super interesting and good experience from state government. What do you think about programs like Texas has, where if you get a federal grant, you know, if you're at U T, that the state will match your federal grant?
I think there are some of the federal, some of matching programs that can be effective. One thing is, if there are eligibility requirements and the federal government deems them eligible, you don't have to do the administrative side of determining that they are in fact eligible. So, several states piggyback on their, the federal historic rehabilitation tax credit. So the federal government says that you're qualified, you get the state credit, you get the federal credit, and then you also get a state credit. So, from an administrative aspect, I think those can be really good. And you also can determine, you don't have to give them the full same amount as the federal grant, it can be a percentage. So, in that respect, if it's something that you deem worthy of support, I think it makes administrative sense at least to go that route.
They seem to have really beefed up their technology departments throughout their universities, doing research grants, you know, patents have spun off.
We have, we have looked at research programs in Oklahoma where it is a legislative appropriation to what is the Oklahoma Center on Advanced Science and Technology, usually has pretty good ROI. You know, advanced research is what's going to lead to products that you hope will be developed in your state then, and the jobs will stay there. But they pay well, and they, you know, they generally are requiring an advanced workforce, which is certainly also an important goal for the state.
What do you do, you know, very broadly with, you know, areas of the state that were really industry-dependent, small cities under 30,000, that that industry has, it's all gone now? What do you do with cities like that?
Yeah, I mean, that gets into kind of economic development questions that weren't really a subject of this particular study.
That's correct.
We experienced this in a community in Iowa called Newton, and Newton was where Maytag was headquartered. And, and when they were sold, they, they lost like 5,000 jobs in a community of 25,000. So it was, it was really difficult. There were some state partnerships that were put in place to assist them with some, you know, kind of redevelopment. I mean, this huge, the huge manufacturing plant, they weren't going to get anybody else to come in with that because it was just so specific to that industry. But they were able to take pieces of it and, you know, transform it. So if there are targeted kinds of investments, you know, everything isn't going to have a positive ROI. Tim Bartik also says government is not in the business of turning a profit. You're going to have to make profit, make targeted investments sometimes that you hope are going to benefit the communities as a whole. But, you know, not everything is going to show up as we put a dollar into that and we got a dollar back in tax revenue.
Yeah, I view the historic tax credit as more akin to that. You know, it doesn't exist in New York City. Most of the money gets plowed into century-old buildings in upstate communities where the economy itself would never lift the rehabilitation. But with that state and federal investment, resets those businesses, those buildings for 100 more years and hopefully a few more generations of commercial and residential.
Yeah, well, the beauty of your incentive and the federal incentive is it has to be for commercialization. So you can't just, you know, you can't rehabilitate your mansion and get the credit. It has to go to commercial activity. So I agree that those are useful kinds of programs. There are Main Street programs in a number of states that are focused on, you know, rehabilitating and improvements to Main Streets and streetscapes. I think those for smaller communities are also important and effective.
Well, thanks so much for your work. We hope to be hearing more out of you in the future.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, Senator Murray.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Thank you for all your hard work. This has been enlightening. Obviously, your focus here, as you mentioned, is the ROI. And, and when we're talking about financial incentives, tax breaks, grants, things like this, maybe it is a little easier to quantify those. But you mentioned that sometimes it's subjective. If we were to, in a, in a, in a great world, if we were to move away from some of the financial incentives as a state and say, we want to improve the business, you know, outlook, if you will, and help some of these businesses through investing in workforce development and training, childcare, as was mentioned before, maybe even incentives to businesses to help with affordable housing. Could you evaluate those? I mean, it would be subjective, but could you and how would you?
Well, obviously, it would depend on the exact, you know, what investment we're talking about. So, right now, we are in the process of finishing up an evaluation in Wisconsin, and they took their kind of quality jobs program, which is a business development tax credit. And legislature added on that besides investments, which are mostly for capital investments or to, or employment-related, that if business had made investments in a childcare facility onsite or in affordable or workforce housing could qualify for the program. Now, there isn't enough data for us to evaluate it, but we believe that we would be able to evaluate that at the appropriate time.
And what would be some of the things you would look at to evaluate that?
You know, first, we would look at the industry and the share of industry, and, you know, if you can get into enough, if there are enough companies that are using the program, that'll be a big if. Then you can do some analysis as it relates to what's happened to employment within that firm. You can also look at neighborhoods and do some comparisons. There's different techniques that you could use. It just, it sort of depends on what it is. Now, I certainly agree with N F I B that finding targeted investments in small businesses is really a good thing, because they do create a lot of employment, and they don't move, you know, they're not going across the river. And so, Oklahoma has one of those programs, and it's for capital investments, and they're small capital investments, you know, $50,000 to $200,000 for small businesses. And they're not, you know, taking technology and laying off workers because now that they have, they're buying stuff, that equipment that they need for their business. And I think those kinds of investments are worthwhile. We evaluated it last year, and it got a good return on investment.
So on that program, was that operated or run through the state itself? Or did they kind of trickle it down?
Their Department of Commerce, which would be the equivalent of E S D.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for testifying today and that extensive report. I'm sure you were here the entire day listening to testimony, starting off with the commissioner. And when I asked her, you know, do you oversee the program regularly? Like, how do you keep them accountable? I was reading through the written testimony here, and the first one is, you know, the state should develop a regular schedule or cycle. And you talk about the cycle most commonly used in other states is four to six years. Why wait that long? You know, the thing is, we want businesses to succeed, right? I had the last panel individual testify, let's wait till, you know, the program expires to evaluate whether we should renew it or not. The E S D and government agencies have the ability to look at the program where they are, look at their data. Why should we wait that long before making a conclusion? Why can't we go in and say, all right, it doesn't look like you're doing much here, step up the game, or else we will take back the incentive?
I mean, I've made myself clear in terms of the recommendation. So, let's say you had 40 incentives that you wanted to evaluate. A four-year cycle would look at 10 of them in the first year, another 10 in the second year, another 10 in the third year, another 10 in the fourth year, and then it would start over. So that's the Oklahoma cycle that they do. So it's not as if you would be waiting. Now, you do usually, if a program just starts, you're not going to have good data for probably three years, just because particularly if they are corporate franchise taxes, the window for, for, and we talk about this in the report, for them to revise their, their tax returns for corporations gives them basically three years. So that's why we, the latest data we could use that was actual data was 2019. So usually, if it's a new program, you're probably going to want to wait about four years anyway, because you really, you probably will not have the data until that point in time.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I also want to thank you so much for your report and how valuable it's been to us in helping things, things through. And because you were here, I know you heard that the E S D C commissioner said, no, they don't really track the tax expenditures that just show up in our tax expenditure report. And I'm particularly concerned, and I think I also said something about this, with the reimbursable tax credits, where even when you don't owe us any taxes, we're giving you sometimes very large sums of money. I know we didn't ask you about that in this report, but I'm curious, have you done any work about how to evaluate that model? Because while the Department of Tax and Finance has this funny little code they use for evaluating just how much was used on any specific tax expenditure, even they admit they don't really have a good model for knowing how much is really being drawn down under any of these categories within our tax code. Have you done any work on how we could better get our arms around that very large issue from a dollar perspective?
We often discuss reimbursable or refundable credits within the incentives if they have that model. We haven't looked like at a state as to how you can track it. The problem, of course, is it all depends on the tax liability for the corporation that's getting the benefit. You know, if they, if they don't have any tax liability and they wish to have the refund, they can. Sometimes they won't take it if they think they're going to have tax liability in future years, because it creates a federal taxable event, and they don't want to pay the federal corporate income tax. So it's pretty complicated in terms of the decision-making. I think refundable credits are particularly useful for programs targeted at small or emerging businesses, because they're not usually going to have a tax liability for several years. So if you are really working to get them up and running, then that can be a useful mechanism. I'm not as enamored with refundable credits as in larger business situations, but, you know, they'll take that into consideration, of course. If you, if they don't think they're going to have any tax liability, I don't know why they, they wouldn't, other than the, you know, than the incentive that they're getting. You know, you can also do transferable credits, where they can sell them, usually for 85, 90 cents on the dollar. Then some of the benefit is leakage, though, because they're going to sell them to banks and insurance companies that have gross receipts taxes that they have to pay every year. So, so that's kind of the trade-off there. But I do think refundable credits on emerging businesses or small businesses are useful. They're not running up your tax bill, though.
The dilemma, I think, for us is we don't have a way to even know who is using them or not using them. I have to admit, the trading idea would make me very nervous, because I see all kinds of liability for us there. But are there states where they actually have access to what the company was that applied, so you know that it's, you know, Amazon or Exxon versus, you know, some small startup companies, as you described? We're always being told that you can't have any information about individual taxpayers' returns, and yet, when you want to do research as to exactly how is all this money going out and to whom, you're really trapped. Are there states that have figured that out?
Well, I mean, there are IRS confidentiality rules that are significant, and you're piggyback stake, so you need to have the IRS data. Clearly, a Department of Revenue or Department of Taxation has access to that data. They can aggregate it. They could, if, if there are enough taxpayers, that it isn't going to make it a possible determine who it is, they can do aggregate, and they can do it by, you know, income levels or number of employees or something. You know, I think it's, sometimes then it becomes a question of willingness to do that work. And I, again, I can't really comment on here in New York State. We work very closely with the Oklahoma Tax Commission on the work that we do there. You know, we've gotten a big education on what they can and cannot provide. But most state tax departments have some idea what's going on within reimbursable or refundable credits. They certainly should.
And you mentioned you came out of Ohio originally. Sorry. So, I thought that Ohio actually did publish much more of their data by company that get different tax exemptions and credits. Maybe I'm remembering that wrong.
I do not know about Ohio. Now, Iowa is one of the states that Pew said was a leading state in terms of their incentive evaluations. I was Budget Director when Department of Revenue hired a bunch of Ph D economists to do that. They publish a lot of information, and they might have some of that kind of data. The problem I have with their studies is they don't ever recommend anything. They just tell you what it is.
Got it. My time is up. Thank you. I believe Senator Scoofus wanted a second round, as does Senator Comrie.
Just one question, and thank you for all your responses here. There's been obviously a lot of conversation about the BUT-4 test. I wonder, in your experience, have you seen any states successfully, statutorily, apply the BUT-4 test beyond self-response, which I don't find to be particularly effective?
Yeah, I'm not, you know, New Jersey has a requirement that a company has to say they were going to go elsewhere. I'm not sure how effective that actually is or not. So there are states that do that kind of thing, make them jump through some sorts of hoops. But I, again, I'm not really sure that there's anything out there that can be that effective, you know, short of giving them lie detector tests, and I don't think you're going to be able to do that.
Yeah, clearly, it's a subjective issue area, but I do wonder if there are ways to sort of sniff out the folks who are trying to game the system here. Are there any best practices that you've seen in other economic development agencies whereby, you know, they go down, if a company's threatening to leave, I'm going to New Jersey, I'm going to look at, you know, this city. Does it make sense that an E S D-type agency goes and talks to the realtors down in the city? Hey, have they actually been talking to you? Or are they lying? Are there any best practices along those lines that you've encountered?
That's a good question. I haven't ever, ever really studied that particular issue. It would be worth looking into. One of the states that we advise has sought to do some level of investigation around companies that say they're looking at other locations. Because, you know, when you go to the location magazines, and there are ones that are, you know, the people that they hire to help them get the best deal, one of the articles was, now you've picked your location, it's time to get the best possible deal. So they'd already decided where they were. They understood that they, a lot of these companies have decided where they want to be, and now it's a question of how much you can get from state and local government. So...
That's right. And, you know, what jumps to mind, and then I'll pass it along to Senator Comrie. There was a New York Times story, this is several years ago, probably five to eight years ago, that examined this scheme that was occurring in New Jersey, whereby it was, I want to say a half a dozen to 10 companies all hired the same exact lawyer to represent them to the state's economic development arm. They threatened to leave to the same They threatened to leave to the same exact business park in Rockland County in New York, just across the border, and they all got the award that they were looking for. Meanwhile, the Times reporter calls the property management company at the business park and says, hey, has Jaguar actually been poking around and looking? None of these companies actually were looking at the business park. It was just a scheme. And so that's where that question comes from.
I read that same article.
Whether we can start developing better, better, best practices.
Yeah, I read that article, too.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Senator Comrie, I think it closed.
Maybe not, but I have to ask, do you think that other than ROI, that there's an emotional or state pride or community pride to bringing in some of these projects? And how can we describe that or or, you know, bring that into as a factor?
I agree with you, Senator. I do think there is some of that, particularly, I mean, the auto industry in Michigan, whether it's maybe the film industry in California, New York, you know, it really has been a two-state show for a long time. Now, Georgia's made a lot of inroads, because they put a billion dollars a year into their incentive program.
Right.
You know, so there is some of that. I think in New York, there are parts of the, you know, New York City economy, I mean, Wall Street, for example, is something, you know, you're never going to do the financial transaction fee for actually collecting revenue from Wall Street, because of, you know, it's important to the state. So it's certainly something you have to be aware of, but the weighing is really up, I guess, to policymakers.
But so there's no way to quantify that in in terms of whether or not something is worthy, or it's just really an emotional reaction depending on people and organizations that are trying to get something done? Or is there a quantifiable way to discern some realization that would be helpful, one way or another?
It would probably depend on the industry. So the Motion Picture Association has done some studies related to, you know, the images of New York City or New York State or wherever, and how, what that may be translate into what you might consider marketing value to the state. And there certainly may be other kinds of businesses or industries where you might be able to do some kinds of survey that you would quantum, put some quantitative value on it. I think it's, it's got to be just kind of a case by case basis. I don't think you could do anything super broad with that topic.
Well, I want to thank you for being here, Mr. Bauer. You've been very helpful to giving us some insight. I hope that you can continue to work with Senator Scoofus and us, so that we can make sure that we're doing, using our money wisely, and hopefully increase transparency from these agencies as well. As you heard earlier, a lot of the state agencies are not promulgating even the products that they have to the community, which is showing why there's a negative ROI in a lot of these things. So we need to raise the transparency, do better promulgation of the products that, as Senator Kruger said earlier, that the Senate, both houses created, because we thought it would be helpful. But for the state not to promote those things only creates a problem that we all need to fix. Thank you.
Thank you all.
You know, this was a very interesting discussion. I commend you all for the participation, because there was a lot of really much deeper discussion than this issue often gets. And it is important, and we appreciate, and, you know, certainly, if we can be of assistance to the state in the future in this area, we're certainly happy to discuss that as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. On behalf of all of us, really appreciate the report you gave us. It has really forced us to ask ourselves hard questions, and I think you saw that today. And frankly, because as I started the hearing with, we know we're walking into an error, era, where we expect far less cooperation or funding from our federal government. We have to get smarter in New York State about what programs we operate, whether they are worth their salt, whether they are a bad use of the public's money, because we are also appropriately under a microscope of how are we spending our money? Is it affordable? You know, are we allowing the state to be an affordable place to grow and for people to stay here and successfully operate their businesses? Or are we going to frankly continue to just have bad policies that we've known are bad policies forever, and yet not choose to do anything about them? So I hope that we all choose to do something about them, and that, again, as you talked about, using statistical, fact-based information to help us make our decisions. So again, thank you very much for your work, and thank you for being here with us. And thank you to all my colleagues here and those listening from other offices around the state. And I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.